All right, let's call this meeting to order. Welcome everybody to this. One dead again, there it is. All right, so for the record, all members of council are present and accounted for and all members of staff are here with the exception of our attorney and I don't think we requested the attorney be here tonight, did we? And Mr. Beeler has sent me a text. He's tied up with a customer and he intends to come. He will be here. And if he doesn't show up, then we'll talk about whether he gets an excused absence or not. We'll do that at the end of the meeting, so. And I know that our city clerk will not let me close the meeting unless we've resolved that particular issue. All right, first item on our agenda for discussion is the ARPA funding. And I'll let our interim manager take off on that one.
Turn that over to Ms. Horner.
Ms. Horner.
Hi. I am just trying to get the spreadsheet pulled up so I can share it on the screen here with you guys. Um, Jackie, can you make it so I can share?
And while you're doing that, I'll say that it is awfully nice to see you back among the land of the living again. I understand you've been sick for a while.
A little sick, but it's it was a real.
As Dennis scoots away.
They've all been, they've all been avoiding me. Okay, here we go.
All right, for the record, Mr. Beeler has arrived as well.
I know you could applause for me, so I. Well, baby.
Okay. So. On the screen, I'm trying to make it more readable for you, so bear with just a second. Okay. So. This is everything right here in row and column M. Is what we have already ordered or encumbered through the rest of the year. That does include staffing costs for those six positions that were initially staffed with ARPA funding through the end of 2024. They were established with amounts at like a hundred and fifty thousand. For the planner, a hundred and fifty thousand for the human resources and nine hundred and fifty thousand for the police officers. Um, and that was when these positions were approved by council. It was basically the city needed the positions, so the city was approving the positions. And the first hundred and fifty thousand or whatever for each position would be paid for out of ARPA. So these aren't considered temporary or unfunded positions. It's just whether how much of the ARPA allocation do we want to put against the positions? So I went ahead and 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 put the encumbered amount, like I said, all the way through the end of the year. And that does, if you look over here in this column, it does show then we were spending a little bit more than was initially planned for those positions. So that's up to you guys if you want to do that. Um, the other items that are encumbered here, let me hide these for a second. So that you can see. So this is those loans that you guys just approved. Um, this is the remainder of the youth programs that she has the the five hundred or the fifty thousand dollars is what the approximate cost of the summer camp will be this year. Plus she has about ten thousand, probably maybe less than that. She just didn't know for sure that of recreation program supplies and things that she had purchased or has on order. Um, that she was going to charge against this. We have twenty two thousand dollars um for the ER and R fund, Public Works. It's for a trailer. Um, for the water department. And then there's about three thousand dollars still in fire department equipment. Um, we have about ten thousand dollars in equipment for the drones to outfit the vehicles. Um, other police equipment, this is all stuff from our our acting city manager there, a bunch of non-lethal. Supplies. Um, some other magazines and things like that. So that's thirty thousand. And then the other project is this um, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the jail HVAC system. So that is all of the things right now. So we had this plan initially. But that's all of the things right now that have been have been ordered and encumbered, okay? If you will, so those are the ones we don't want to go back on. We don't want to make changes to them right now because they're already in the plans. So that gives us this remaining allocation column, column G right here. So that is included in this in this actual number. I just had it adding. So this remaining allocation number, we have about one point five million that we can still, we can move around, reallocate however the council chooses to do so. Um, I did put some projects down here at the bottom that were things that had been previously talked about with ARPA. Um, so as soon as that scrolls. Oh, there it goes. Okay, so there's this Midville project. This is the one I was talking about at our last meeting, this nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, when it was initially talked about for developing that Alexander Midville corridor for commercial properties. They did talk about using ARPA funds, but when the prob- the project kind of dragged on and on and on, and by the time it finally got there. There wasn't enough ARPA to fully cover all of it left in an allocation, but we knew we were going to be selling the um, Monson site. So we basically swapped it out of ARPA, but we could swap it back in now. Um, and put that money against the ARPA that's remaining. Then there's also the Yakima Valley Ha- um, Highway Pathway Project with Grandview. Uh, we we did commit to a hundred thousand dollars there in in improving that pathway between Grandview and Sunnyside. Grandview committed an amount as well. Um, they're still drying up the interlocal agreement, I believe Grandview is. The last I heard from Shane, have you heard any updates from him?
I have not.
Okay, so their Grandview is coming up with the interlocal agreement. This um, this is the the Pathway Association applied for ARPA funds through the county. And they were awarded those funds, and so the city of Sunnyside and the city of Grandview both matched um, some of those funds. And then we have our our well project that we weren't expecting that eleven, twelve, and thirteen, which right now we funded by taking the the reservoir painting project off. But theoretically, we could put that against ARPA. Um, and then there's some other ones that I just put down here that are just, you know, kind of ideas. We could put the reservoir painting project back on and pay for it out of ARPA. We have the South Hill Parking Expansion that was talked about. And then obviously the animal shelter is a big one, so I and I'm sure that you guys have plenty of other things, but I built this in here so we can. Add things in and put some amounts down and we can kind of look at how that number changes. So this number in green right here, this is our remaining allocation with just these things right here, but I'm happy to play with it live. So if you guys have things you want to spend it on, now's the time.
All right, council members, questions, comments, things you'd like to add to the list, Mr. Beeler?
Let's just say we picked the Midville project. Don't we have a time limit of when that has to be actually spent, not just allocated also?
That money is spent now. We 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 paid the port already, our portion, our nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, and so all of these, because of the way that we claimed our money under revenue replacement. As long as our expenditures comply with the the things that we can spend money on. We can allocate any expenditures against this. We just have to determine which ones. And those expenditures have to either be spent or fully obligated under contract by the end of this year.
Okay.
Yeah. But so I could take these ones out just for showsies, you know, so you can sort of see. Um, how much? So there's, if we just did the Midville problem project, we would still have a half a million. Um, or we can keep those in, or I can spitball a bunch of other things with you guys, so that is what I'm here for.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Can you touch base on the on the negative amounts? Um, is that amount spent? If we were to spend the the rest of the year or is just up today?
That's for the, that includes, like I said, this encumbered amount down here at the end that I am highlighting. This is through the end of the year. So this initial allocation amount, they were just sort of general. Numbers we sort of put in there for the amounts of money we'd like to put against the cost of these positions. So we could stop at that amount for all of these if you wanted to, and that would throw more money into the ARPA pot, if you will.
What would that do to the positions?
Well, the positions are fully funded and they're enforced. They weren't, they weren't brought on as temporary positions. They were brought on as positions that the city needed, but because we had one time ARPA money, we were going to pay for the first couple of years out of the ARPA funds. You know, as part of the way to cover some of it, but they're all permanent positions. So like I said, I just built it in through the end of the year, but if you wanted to stop so that these just capped out at that initial amount, I can just change these numbers here. Um, to those totals and then um, it'll shoot some more money in over in there too. So how I'm I'm here to to do as you will.
Ms. Hart.
Just just as a matter of curiosity, the two place, the two positions that were put on hold. Earlier this year. Um, those were also funded through the ARPA funds.
No, they were not.
Okay. So their army as opposed to being an ARPA money.
Correct.
Has the need for those positions gone away?
Uh, I don't believe the need for the recreation position has gone away at all. I know that Trevor has made some changes in his department. Oh, but that wasn't one of the ones. It was the, what was it? Oh, the tech. Oh, no, he definitely needs that. Sorry, I forget.
There was one for the tech and there was one for the recreation from five to closing for the programs after after school, basically.
They're um, still putting together what they're going to bring to you guys to basically say this is what we're going to have these people do. We're hoping to do that by the end of this month. Um, so that they can, because I think you guys wanted more of an outline of exactly what the job duties were, what they're, what was going to keep them busy every day. So I think they're working on getting that back to you.
Knowing that they were going to be busy from five until closing with lots of T-ball and lots of soccer and whatever else is going on after. The other thing with the need for the tech specialist. That is still, if I remember correctly, that is still very um, needed. Probably growing in need as we speak. From the different things that we've talked about here as far as tech-related activities going on around the city.
Right now, IT is sitting at one person, me. Right now, Jafet's on vacation. Right now, I'm on twenty four seven.
Right, so it'd be very helpful to have somebody to.
It's to be long days.
Yeah. But nevertheless, there is a serious need there in that department for three people.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't remember that. I don't remember missing that conversation.
Yeah.
Okay.
We had a conversation.
But in any case. I just want to make sure we don't lose that in the talk. I know we're talking about ARPA money tonight, but that's, I just don't want to lose face. I don't want to lose track of those positions because I think we need to look at those.
And that could come up, Ms. Hardy, in the item B here, goals and priorities as far as staffing in City Hall and that sort of thing, we can.
Okay, well, let's, let's, okay, I'm just gonna make myself a note, then excuse me for that, but I did didn't want to lose it.
I was gonna say, if if the council determines at some point. Prior to them ha- putting the stuff together that they want to. Take those and unfreeze those, all we would have to do is present another resolution. So if you have already made a deter- sorry, this is so off the subject of ARPA. But if you've already made a determination that you would like to unfreeze some of those positions, if somebody would just let us know that decision, we can. Work with you to prepare another resolution and undo that as well, but that's.
I think you said you were gonna bring something up, right?
They're they're gonna bring um, basically their job plans to you before the end of April, I believe.
Both both departments?
Yes.
Yeah, that'll be.
Yeah, I would think that that would be great. Thank you Lucia for that work.
Thank you.
All right, further questions or comments?
Um, go ahead.
Oh, I guess just to get us back to to point here, I would actually appreciate since I'm, you know, I'm not a budget expert per se, but I I just, and I'm very visual. If maybe we could move some of that, those funds that you mentioned, Ms. Horner, um, I think it's the ones, the HR.
These ones, you want to?
Yeah, just so we can actually see what we're working with. And then I know you did it at one point with the previous council when y'all were doing budget review and it really helped just to kind of see where we were moving money around to and where we still could fit. Uh, some some of those those monies into. Um, since we're gonna be brainstorming this today, cracking down on it.
There you go.
I think if we're able to remove them from ARPA and we have the funding, like you said, to keep to keep them, I would rather see that.
In ARPA or not in ARPA?
Not in ARPA.
Okay, so this would be the way to do that. So then that changes our our amount here remaining.
What do you take? I'm sorry. What are we taking out of ARPA?
All I did was I changed this amount here for these um. The encumbered amount only through the cap that was already established by you guys, and this is one fifty, one fifty, and nine fifty. So I just changed that encumbrment to just only to stop at that amount. So that changes the bottom line here.
The positions won't go away. They just won't get funded by.
They'll be funded up to one fifty, but it won't go beyond, which is what that red was showing before that how much it was going beyond what our original funding was.
But they're still funded.
They're still funded, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Um, I mean, is this is time to to talk about like projects, I guess, that we would like to see?
Well, correct. So some of the stuff that we had talked about last year in the previous council was what she'd brought up, that Midville project, which we've already spent the money. Um, Yakima Valley Highway, the project or the pathway project um, as a joint. Effort between Grandview and and Yakima County and ourselves. Um, then we've got the wells, which there's some urgency with that. And then there's other stuff that's come up that we've discussed as well, and you can see those listed up there as well.
Came out of my brain. I didn't discuss them with anyone, so I don't want you to ma- I don't want to make it look like we all got together. My other department heads might be mad at me if I put my pet projects up there.
So the animal shelter is something that we've been talking about since the middle of last summer when we. It became evident that we were going to have an animal control problem, when the Humane Society stopped um, being responsible for animal control. And we had to come up with something different. We need to be able to put those animals somewhere, so a shelter. I believe it was last fall sometime when a fundraising was started. Not sure how that's going, but um, allowing the community to get involved and maybe have some um, some buy into the project. And then, of course, we've gone back and forth on painting the water tower up on the skyline up on the hill. And obviously with the urgency of the wells, the skyline painting projects kind of been pushed back in the urgency of um. Of of many of us, but that doesn't mean that that's the majority of us. And so wanting to get some of your feedback on that, but. As Jameson said, um, there's other projects perhaps that are not up there that are near and dear to your heart that you'd like to see something happen with. And we don't know about it, and I mean, everybody doesn't know about it unless you tell us. So we're hoping for ideas, input, that kind of stuff.
I have, I have one idea. I mean, I've I've talked to Mary way before the elections and whatnot, and and it's always been the case that indoor soccer wasn't allowed in in the community center. And the excuses, you know, the walls, right? I don't think six, seven-year-olds kick that hard to break a wall, but is is there something that we could maybe do on the bottom? Four feet of the walls around it, using some ARPA money, so we could protect those walls and allow indoor?
Well, in the past, it was even with young ones, they would, there was some holes that were put on the walls. So yes, we we've kind of talked about what maybe could be done. Uh, we thought maybe even netting. Maybe there's a way to run some nets across that could temporarily be pulled out, that would slow the ball and bring it down. Um, or just. Wood panels going up maybe three quarters of the way or something, because it does have them on the bottom. It's just when they get kicked higher than that. Um, and that was, yes, that is something. And you could bring in indoor sports, especially in the winter.
Is it, was this the little kids, like the six, seven-year-olds doing the?
Well, I I think other even older group.
Older groups.
And that's, that's the thing, yeah, so um. Without anybody being there again, then it goes back to going that to that position. If there were somebody there, you know, that could oversee this. That would also help too, but the main thing was it was just the the holes that were being put in the wall. Um, just because, again, they have to be supervised in case somebody just kicks it. But um, the other thing too there that we, you know, we keep talking about all these different youth things, which are important and they're great. But one of the things we also need is storage. We've we, there is no more storage and right now um, we kind of looked and see what would probably be the least expensive. And maybe using getting something like a sixteen by forty or something shed put in the back. We did take some measurements. It'd probably be somewhere around thirty to forty thousand plus. A fence to fence it in and put some gravel. Um, that would probably get us to something to where we can take some of that stuff that she has in there now that it's occupying the uh. The uh, that room for for conferences. Um, also in the game room, there's things that are kind of stored in there and then the other rooms. So by by taking some of the, and plus other things, she she even talked about maybe maybe like wrestling or something, but. The mats, you really have nowhere else to put them. So things like that would take up a lot of storage, and so without an actual storage room. It's kind of, we're we're getting to that point where we're limited on what we can do, because then you need supplies, but then you need to store them.
Mm-hmm, so. Yeah, I remember we were doing the walkthrough with her and I, she did bring up the the lack of storage issue. No, no, I was just, yeah.
Have we considered contacting the construction class at the high school? I know that they'll build sheds just if we pay for the material or?
Um, yeah, she she checked in on stuff like that before, uh, even for the gazebo up on uh, one of the parks upland. They don't, the the shop that does that stuff doesn't, they weren't interested in in doing anything like that.
I I know that the the Perry Tech uh. Um, school that just opened. I remember and we did a wa- well, I did a walkthrough with them. Well, you don't think you did a walkthrough with them, but anyways, it doesn't matter. Um, but they were saying that they would always, they would be open to uh, partnering with the city for any. Projects um, in the future, like building something, renovating. Um, any of our proj- existing projects like a gazebo, let's just say. Um, so they they could also be an option. Or trying to look at options.
Perry Tech and see if they'd be interested in some, or what would it take, but either, I mean. Point is, they're still, we we need it, we need the storage. We need some sort of building back there and. And if we go with something, you know, if we go into the engineering and all, we're gonna end up spending. All the money and not have anything really left for for the storage building. So that's why we were trying to find maybe something. Prefabricated already that would be able to just come in there, kind of like the stuff here that's in Sunnyside. Um, the biggest they make is obviously a sixteen foot wide by, I think forty is the the longest. Um, but that would uh, and then, you know, obviously adding a little bit of power, not, no heat or nothing, because it would just be for storage. But just some electricity in there, um, and that would get us something to what we need for to store. So those are the only other things besides, yeah, going back to. Youth programs is we need storage there.
Um.
Ms. Hart.
I don't know. I was waiting to see if somebody down there was speaking.
Nobody had their hand waving.
Okay, just me. Um, I was just thinking, um, as far as um. Because I know we store a lot of things there, like for the the uh, the Christmas uh, festival of trees. But also the soccer materials and, you know, not being able to use that one conference room is um. Is kind of limited our space use of the community center as well. So if we can can get some sort of a storage unit, I mean, even if we do go the route. Of the sixty uh, sixteen by forty shed and with the fencing, that's still less money than we would be if we had to go out and. Build it from scratch. But it would do, it would do the, do the trick.
Is it feasible to use someone like, say, Kervman Steel or something that come in, they do a lot of the prefab stuff and just set it down on a slab that we pour and then that not a whole lot of engineering on our part that we'd have to do?
No, and that's, that's what I mean. We're looking at something that's like that, that's something that's already prefabricated or, you you know, of course, there's going to be some labor there to to.
Right.
Rec that, but but or the other one would, it would just be brought in into a gravelled area and. Basically just run some power to it um, and and then fence it in. But either way, yeah, either way, those are, those are the things that we're looking because they'd be the least expensive. Yeah.
And the quickest to do, I think.
Yeah.
I just want to caution us when we're talking about purchasing something. We would have to go through all of the correct procurement methods, so. Discussing um, a vendor is not go- is not a good idea at this point.
No, and we were using that as an.
I know, I'm just saying, I just making sure.
Yeah, no, we we did call, we just to get a budget number, but yes, we we know that we're, we'd have to go through the whole process. It's just. Getting kind of a rough number of what it would kind of cost um, to put something there of that type.
And what was the number you came up with?
Well, the biggest one they have there, at least from here, just to get a number, was a sixteen by forty and it's around thirty thousand. Then we figured, well, okay, then we would fence that in, put some gravel, uh, probably a little bit of electrical, so we're thinking maybe. Say fifty thousand.
Oh, fifty thousand total.
For total.
Total.
Yeah, that that probably could get us.
Okay.
To what we need. And again, that was just a budget number. We we know that we were still gonna call around and get some other bids, but.
Um, do you know approximately about retrofitting for for panel siding or something or any of the net materials?
No, and that we, yeah, no, we would have to bring somebody in and see what it would cost to. Put up, either we if we go with plywood up, like we said, maybe three quarters of the way, what that would cost.
Okay.
Um, bring a couple contractors in there and get some quotes and kind of see what, if if that's the route, yeah, if we want to do inside soccer.
Just just want to.
Save the walls.
Just want to mention as well, it wasn't just soccer. I mean, it was basketball too. I mean, um. Some damages too, because those walls are not, they're like what?
Sheet rock.
Sheet rock.
They weren't built to use.
They weren't really gym material at all ever. Um, because that was built on the on the short, on the skinny side. Um, but yes, if we could get s- get something in there, even if it just went three quarters up the wall, that still could be attractive for the other events that we hold. Um, I kind of think that that would kind of solve some of that um, damage.
So without us knowing an amount, is there an amount? So without us knowing an amount, is there an amount that council would like to discuss sticking in here?
Are you talking you talking about for the protection inside the gym walls?
A retrofit of the community center?
Realistic ballpark number out there.
I don't know anything about constructions, no.
Well, well, what's the cost of OSB right now? Eighty bucks a sheet?
Cheaper than that.
Even that. Um, it was ninety for a while, so.
Yeah. Forty dollars now, I don't know.
Okay.
But it it depends how far you want to get into the gym.
Mm hmm.
You if you're looking to just put a veneer over the walls, do you want to get into the walls? It it's really depends on the scope of it because. I mean, at the end of the day, you're putting plywood over sheet rock and that will also break down over time as well. So that's just. My two thought, my.
Well, and and you got the price of the material, the labor, and then obviously we're gonna have to paint it. So um, yeah, we'd have to probably just bring somebody in and just give us. Give us a proper bid.
And you're doing like three walls. Because you have the bleachers on that one side.
Well, we would have to do, yeah, but when you kick the ball, it can go anywhere.
It can go anywhere.
So we would want to do all four walls.
Sounds good. So are you talking seventy five thousand or? You think a hundred?
We'd have to just, yeah, get a measurement, bring somebody in there and just give us a budget number and that'll kind of guide us.
Can we give some sort of maybe an estimate?
The council just put a reserve amount on it?
That's what I'm wondering.
Hundred and fifty for both.
For the retrofit and the shed?
It should, yeah.
Thank you.
I would think so.
And if it comes. I kept trying to come up with a number, so I thank you, George, for that one because I couldn't make a number come up in my head.
That's what I was thinking. That's a good good number, I think.
Jackie, can you scroll up to the top on the?
This is me.
Or that's you can draw.
I have two two things that I want to make sure we answer. Oh, sorry.
Uh, youth programs, uh you allocated two fifty, you used.
Well, we still have this um this amount encumbered through the rest of the year, so what isn't unencumbered is the seventy four right now. But also there's this pool improvement amount that nothing, I don't know what the plan is for it.
Does she have any idea what she wants to do with those seventy four thousand?
No, we put everybody on a stop, no more planning in order to give you guys this opportunity.
So what kind of improvements does the pool need at this point? I mean, I know we have grants to paint the exterior, right?
And interior.
And interior?
Yep, that's taken place since last week. So that's that's being worked on as far as the painting, but that's under that's under a grant um. The only other thing that we we kind of talked about, it isn't going to be, I don't think it's going to be that much other than some equipment, but we thought about. Extending the fence to the west. Because really there is no seating there inside for just people that want to sit in there and let the, yep. So this would give you more room inside the fence and allow some tables in there and things that. Like you see in other places, somewhere where families can sit and 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 it really would be more of just extending the slab and and adding. Uh, extending the fence.
More uh more or less cost wise on doing that, you know?
Uh, well, that's again, that that being, I don't think it'd be a lot just because there's there was some money there for that. For the pool improvements, which I think that would cover um that cost. Um, then maybe some equipment.
Would we don't really allocate the hundred and forty five?
So you want to propose keeping the hundred and forty five?
Yeah.
And do the extension?
I think we need to do that, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Think.
So that will reduce, that will reduce the one point five.
So anything we, so she's taken all of the remaining allocations and. Telling those up to the one point five. So anything you guys plan will go against the one point five will have to be subtracted from the.
I'm I'm.
She's running.
Putting these back in here.
That's why I wanted to see that before we start throwing out ideas and numbers and then, hey, you know what?
Lastly, there's the two numbers here, so.
And since we're still talking kind of on pull it work stuff, um, the Tina Knott bathroom.
Uh huh.
Allocated back in 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 twenty two was eighty thousand dollars. But um after we had, we looked into that and and base getting a prefab bathroom that comes. You know, male and female already, everything where it just sits on a on a slab. Um, I think it's gonna, that was back in twenty two. It it's going to probably be a little bit more. I do think that we we need a bathroom here uh. Even even right now, without, you know, I know there was some thoughts and and some plans going forward with all the other. Um, things that we want to do, but having a bathroom there, even now, just using the 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 soccer fields.
Mm hmm.
Um, needs needs a bathroom. And so I I don't think eighty thousand, I think the budget number was around a hundred and. Twenty, hundred and fifteen was uh to get us a bathroom that would basically just comes. And and you set it down.
Are these the same bathrooms they use uh at the uh federal parks, uh rest?
No, the those are like an outhouse style.
Yeah.
No, this would be, the only thing we would need to is run the sewer line to to Homer. But and connect the water, but everything's already comes prefabbed and just set it down.
And and those are kind of plastic and you can't really spray paint them all that well, right? That's a little more.
I think they come in different finishes.
Okay, because I see I've seen some of them that are really graffiti resistant.
Yeah, I think they they come in whatever different exterior finish you want um. But anyways, that number was close back in twenty two. That's not going to get us to where we need to do that bathroom. Um, so anyways.
I say you want to increase it at one twenty?
Yeah, I was thinking one twenty would be if we increase that by forty.
I think it's a good idea because we're talking about different grants, right? We want to come in with 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 facilities and stuff and at least we have some.
Well, even now, yeah, you just just having a bathroom there would really, really help that park.
Mm hmm. I think you'd see a lot more usage of it.
Yeah.
Yes, quickly.
And so that building that, what is it? It's the police station's building right over here? Would there be any possibility to turn that into bathrooms?
There are bathrooms in there, but that's uh our detectives are housed out there.
Oh.
Because we've outgrown this building, so we have a small training room and a detective office out there.
I thought it wasn't being used. Well, kick a mountain, let's put bathrooms.
I mean, if if council.
Well, you know, I think I I think we need to have the the detectives need the room because we're out outgrowing this facility. But certainly having we, I I think we'd get more use out of Tina Knott soccer field. Um, uh picnic tables, if we had a bathroom, we have set of bathrooms out there and it's been one of the. I think one of the holdups for people using it is there's just not been enough um facility for it. Um, so I I I think that that's, we should really consider that.
Admiss order.
Can I just make a comment? We have done that work on that, the there's those plans that HLA has put together. So I don't know if the thing that you're discussing, would that be something that we could take off of that plan? Or could we use that plan to to design design where it goes so that we don't? Because I know you guys had talked about some other grant opportunities and potentially going after some other grants for shovel ready projects, right? So if you do a portion of that, making sure that we're. Are are we still going to pursue that angle or do you want to take all of that off the table is is my question, I guess.
So I I know a while back there was, there was brought up about an RCO grant for that park. I think one of the things that came up that we had to, I I think HLA was here at the time. Was to really consider too is that once you, whatever you put there, you can't change again over. So that was one of the. Concerns that we really had to look into. So therefore, even if if we're going to apply for something that we can't just go turn around and. And change it because it's obligated through the grant. Um, again, and those were, that was still kind of up in the air. So but the bathroom. Regardless of which way or what we do, we still need a bathroom. So if if it's possible, since eighty thousand was already allocated there, then then we can continue by adding another forty. Um, unless you have a different idea, then.
Wasn't that park donated to the city for a soccer facility? The family donated it?
No.
No, it wasn't donated to the city, but it was designated for uh youth athletics and soccer was designated as. As what we wanted to see it happen. So.
I think that grant, I think that grant would fit perfect is the meaning. We need it, right? For the for the youth facility.
Well, we always see more.
Well, yeah, there's there's grants that'll come by, but just one of the things that we have to, because there's always grants coming. It's just, those are the, some of the things that we have to consider though, is that we can't just. Five, six years from now decide we want to do something different um because. That was the agreement we made with the with the grant.
Who's this? Just just a quick question. If you remember at the Festival of Trees, there was a a uh. Set of plants and people were voting on the different plants. Does anybody remember what the?
It was the animal shelter.
For the animal shelter.
Three different, three different options for the animal shelter. We could pick the one that we liked and vote in favor of that and and that status is kind of. Up in the air right now too. Uh, Ms. Vasquez.
I have a response. I I was at the community center and I walked by and all the votes are still in the boxes, so no one ever picked them up.
So we haven't, we haven't looked at them?
No, no one has.
Well, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Since we're talking about the animal shelter, do we know the amount that was raised from the Felt of Festival Trees? For the animal shelter? I know it was divided between the hospital and the animal shelter. The um I'm meeting with uh somebody from the hospital this week to go over that. Um, Elizabeth Alba was handling most of that herself, so. Um, I did get another question this week about the animal shelter fund, so I'm going to be going through that and trying to pin that down for you guys, but I don't have that information right now.
Yeah, we're anxious to hear that because, yeah, people were getting excited about it and now it's going to stop for the last couple of months and I I don't want to lose that. I think. You know, there there were different ideas thrown out there and dozens of ideas, but we had the three options that were presented to council and community members. And I'd like to see how those votes turned out. I didn't realize those votes had never been counted, so thanks for bringing that to our attention. Um, but I'd like to see how much has been donated and. Not lose momentum for that because we still have a crazy number of loose dogs running around town and. We need to really make some positive steps on that.
Yeah. Yeah, we do.
Going back to Tina, do we want to increase it then to the one twenty or what are we doing?
I think we, I like that.
I say we increase it. We need it.
I don't think we're going to get bathrooms for less than that, honestly.
Well, we need the bathrooms.
Going back to youth, uh so we um it would be super useful to know. If there were any plans on how we wanted to use those seventy four K. Um, the positions aren't funded through ARPA, so I'm I'm assuming um. Mary might have some ideas on how she wanted to use it, maybe for some events throughout the summer. Do we have any idea? Had there been ever communicated with Mary? And you, Mr. Sanchez?
The only things that I I know that she was. Because she knew she had money that was going to be going out for the youth programs, uh the summer camp. The there were some equipment that she wanted to also purchase, but again, it was it was also depending on on storage. Um, and then um. Yeah, I think that was that was kind of, everything was kind of tied to to each other. So um. By having the storage, that opens up to be able to to get more things. Um, yeah. Because there was interest, uh I think the public had, you know, for like wrestling tournaments and things, but again, without the storage for the. Mats, then she really just couldn't go out and purchase mats because we talked about, well, can we? Can they be rolled up and just put on the side of the gym? Well, if it was just a gym, it'd probably be okay, but it's also used for events like. The the Tree Festival and things, other things that it would just be in the way, it wouldn't be proper, so.
And so if we use this for summer camp, for example, or some of these funds, then. Um, I think there was a fee last year for summer camp, correct me if I'm wrong, so maybe we would do this at like no cost. For the families, is was that kind of the idea with using some of?
There's recreation contributions, but those are, those are, those revenues don't always necessarily go directly to the summer camp. So all costs associated with the summer camp were paid for by ARPA, but there is still a fee. For, but there is a scholarship program, so people can apply for scholarships for the um for the summer camp.
And I think we set that up two years ago, a year and a half ago.
I think you're right, yeah.
We set up the scholarship program about a year and a half ago.
Yeah, we talked about it about this time last year, if I remember well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be about right. It'd be about a year ago we were talking about that. Ms. Vasquez, you had a question or comment?
Yeah. So going also back to the youth, I I'm seeing, reading item B and it says city council goals and priorities. So I would like to share at least one of my goals regarding the youth. One of the things that I've been speaking to the youth a lot about. They've been reaching out to me and a lot of them have been staying very connected to the city council meetings, which is very impressive. Um, today we have Michelle, she's one of my interns and she's surprised me right now as well. So. Um, with that being said, I, one of my goals for city council would be to establish a Sunnyside Youth Commission. I know that it's something new, but the reason why is because I do have a lot of youth that are interested in being more involved with the community. It would be a good opportunity to even give the youth like a Sunnyside City Tours, something very similar to. What new city council members, what we experience going to all the facilities, getting some more knowledge and insight of what each department does. And that way you can also raise up more curiosity and involvement from the youth. That way, let's say they graduate and they find themselves passionate to maybe work in the public wo- works department or. Possibly become an inspired, become inspired by a police chief or become inspired by maybe one of us council members. Or even the mayor, maybe they like numbers and they find Jameson's job very fascinating and enjoyable. So. One of my goals would be to establish a youth uh commission. That way we can. Open up positions for them. And I've seen this done in other cities, they where they open up positions up to. Twelve youth and we could come into an agreement with the number and we get to. Choose and they can come in and have that whole interview process and we could ask them why they want to be a part of it. And this all ties back into even helping us as a community. I remember Trevor, the other at one of our meetings was mentioning. All the graffiti, you know, growing up, growing and growing and incrementing in our community. And he brought up a good idea of. Possibly buying paint and matching it with paint and code enforcement could help or his department could help. And that's something that if, let's say, there's, they're really busy with other things that are more. Let's say time pressured or they need to focus on the most. This is something where. This youth and this commission could say, hey, Trevor, how can we help? Can you? Can you guys give us the paint? We're willing to paint as a group and we're willing to post the picture. And post it on Instagram and say, let's keep Sunnyside clean and safe. And let's just promote. Our community and let's give our youth this opportunity and these positions to grow and. Learn to be leaders and learn to see who we are as a community and leaders.
Well, I think that's a great idea, honestly. Um, it works in other communities. There's no reason why it can't work here. But I also think that you might almost be talking about two separate. Commissions. I mean, one is a service club from the school who wants to go out and help cover up graffiti and help do other things, pick up litter or. Clean up the flower beds downtown ahead of the lighted parade or whatever. And another one that wants to get involved and, you know, learn about. City government, city functions and how all the departments work. And it's almost like. Civics, civics class. I mean, you know, back in the fifties and sixties, they had these classes called civics where you learn about government. And this could be part of that because it, you know, that's not taught as much in schools anymore, so give these kids an opportunity to do it. And it's a club that would change membership one hundred percent every four years. Because these kids will graduate from high school and we want to replace them with new and excited individuals. So. Yeah, I mean, you want to start working and putting something together, what that would look like and and present that to council. I think that you would probably get an enthusiastic response.
Yes, and then the, so I believe also it could be intertwined, you know, um they can. It can be civic engagement and for them to learn the whole civic process, but I think even community service kind of ties into it all together. And I would, I'm more than willing to bring this, but this is why I was just thinking of this and this is kind of an idea and. This is where I'm just like, could we po- possibly also put a hold of some money for this when I do bring it to council?
Possibility, yeah, absolutely. Ms. Brownstone, you had your hand up.
Yeah, no, Seattle does that. Um, and I think we had talked about this, but Seattle has a youth commission. So. I guess my only question is, would we need funding to create another commission?
We haven't used a lot of funding to create our commissions in the past, so. I'm not sure what to say right there. I mean, it it's a possibility we'd use some funding, but for the most part, it's been volunteer commissions and. So we haven't really used any funding. We've just said this is what.
Create a commission.
This is what we want to do and we lay out the outline. This is what we're expecting. This is what we're looking for. This is what the requirements for membership are. We need somebody from this, from that, from here. And then then we open it up. So that really doesn't take a fair amount, a huge amount of money on our part or anybody's part, to be honest.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I might just, on on uh Counselor Vasquez uh. Proposition or or proposal, I just wanted to share this little bit of information from my experience. So um going back. A few years, we won't talk about how many, uh but when I first started my fire service career, actually what got me into it was there's something called an AmeriCorps grant. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that counselor, but um they uh oftentimes fund these um positions or at least provide some sort of. Incentives type and whatever is to those individuals who might be interested in those roles. So again, my first uh paid position, if you will, in the fire service. Was funded on an AmeriCorps grant. Um, they're uh. How am I trying to word this? They're they're a pretty, um, they're not a super challenging grant to receive, especially. How am I trying to word this? They're, they're a pretty, um, they're not a super challenging grant to receive, especially if this is a, a commission that's already been established or at least in the process. And the term I used was shovel ready. So something kind of similar to that. Um, in my previous positions, we put in for and received AmeriCorps grants and they can fund, um, uh, groups for shorter terms or fewer individuals for longer terms. But the, the committee that, uh, reviews those grants is really fond of, of, again, you have graffiti cleanup committees or whatever it might be. So there's even from my own experience and having built my career off of it, um, there's quite a few different, um, funding opportunities for, for committees or, or positions like that. Um, especially if we're trying to gear towards the youth, that's what their, what their, um, intent is. And so, um, if we're looking to bring in youth, especially like whether it be for a summer program or for a short-term internship type thing, um, they typically cover the cost of that. And they do, um, provide a, a, uh, benefit package along that goes that individual. So something to consider. I just wanted to bring it up because I consider it part of my success story, if you will, but, um. I think something that can be brought to a table and used for, for our city's benefit as well.
Yes. Thank you for that information. And that's super, you see, like even him sharing that, we see the fruits of it all. So that's something amazing.
No, and I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, I have found that now that my, you know, I, I started my career as a high school teacher and then my kids. All grew up in and out of the house and have much less contact with the youth of our community than I used to. I used to be one of those guys standing on the pool deck the whole time as an official for swim meets. I knew hundreds of kids in Sunnyside. I knew all the kids that my kids were hanging out with. My house was full of kids. Now they're all graduated and I don't see any of them. So I appreciate the fact that you guys have the contact. And that you're bringing that forward. I think these kinds of ideas, whatever brings people to engage into the community, I think is a great idea. And. Quite honestly, we are not going to be on council forever and we need to prepare the people who are going to follow us. And we want them ready to serve. We want them enthusiastic. We want them to have ideas and also to learn how to work with city staff. And how to get things done through that. So, no, I think that's great. So I look forward to hearing your, your presentation when you've got that ready to go and you can draw in other council members as you wish and community members. And I think this is, this is something that's got some real merit to it. So thanks for bringing that up. Going back to the ARPA funding, it seems as if our major areas of interest are in youth programs at this point.
Do we want to set, set aside fifty, like fifty thousand for that? The youth commission funds? I mean, that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to use it, but. Spray paint material, you know?
Okay, yeah, just let's get to that in a second. It seems as if our main focus for this council is youth programs. Am I hearing that right?
Hmm, there's other focuses.
Yeah, okay. We're just getting started is what you're saying. Okay. All right.
So I would, I would, I would say that there is money available to do some of these things, especially something that is. You know, fifty thousand or less that we can find ways to work it into the budget. The rush with ARPA is to get it obligated or spent through the end of the year. So some of these ideas are absolutely fantastic, but because they're sort of in the development phase, it may not be the best. Thing to throw on ARPA right now, but I'm happy to put a number in here. If you guys want to obligate something to get it started. I don't know if I would go with the whole fifty thousand because I think we, you probably wouldn't spend that much before the end of the year.
I was thinking more like maybe ten, five, ten.
I think ten thousand would be a good number. Um, once again, we've never spent any money putting together a commission, um, and so to have that there just in case. Is great and. Still, we have to, it has to be obligated and it has to be spent. And so somehow or other it's going to have to be used in a youth program. I think if we obligate it towards youth, but I think we can find youth programs to do that, too.
And if it's not the commission, because I, yeah, I don't see ourselves spending money to form a commission. Uh, we've never done it. So, um. So in a, and I know that these have to be allocated and, and did you say we have by June? So.
Well, we, we have to either spend it or have it under contract by, by the end of December. So we really need to like be, have them all pinned down by the end of June. So that there's at least a contract in the works.
Okay, okay, okay. And then so I know summer's coming along. So I'm just trying to think about this youth commission, like what could we actually use for and make sure we actually spend it? Because we're on a time crunch. So I know youth like. They're, um, they go like they're in summer, right? They all, they go, they all go off to summer. So it's just like having an idea of what we would actually use it for. Because I know the commissions we don't need funding for.
So I was thinking we could even give a small stipend and also use that money to purchase paint or use that money to maybe create a website, um, small things like that.
Okay. The other side of it too is you have to be aware that it does take a little while to fill a commission. So if we're talking about trying to get that filled this school year, you've got two months. And if it's something you want to fill at the beginning of next school year, the need to be aware of that as well. And, um, figure out the process for getting that filled. So.
If it's on there, if it's not on there, it could happen regardless.
Pardon?
Um, just like the idea of like, you know, formulating like a group program or a youth program, like, does it necessarily have? My question is, does it have to come from ARPA funds or do we, oh, no? Okay.
It does not.
Thank you for that. So then I, if it doesn't, then I would say maybe not listed on there, just, or maybe we can hold off on it and then we can come back to it if we do have the extra. Funds after we go through our extensive list. Does anybody have any, like, I don't want to over.
I just want to say one thing. So. There is money up above that's allocated. There, there's projects that we're working on. Like. We're working on replacing the HVAC system for the jail. That's probably a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that we were going to charge to ARPA.
That's here already. It's in this, it's in this encumbered, um, thing. So if it's not in this encumbered thing and it's still listed here, we're relisting it. With a, we're, we're basically putting a new allocation number here.
Okay. I, I see that it's encumbered now.
Yeah.
So I don't have that form, so.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Trevor.
Okay, Trevor. Just to kind of go along with what y'all are saying, there's also a line in here that's for, uh, abatement. So a nuisance abatement right there. So if you, if there is. If you're in touch with any youth groups, anybody that needs community service, anybody who needs X, Y, or Z, um, we have money allocated right now. Towards nuisance abatement. So if you want to get some paint, I'll, I'll go up to standard tomorrow and get you, you know, fifty gallons of paint if that's what you want. So. Uh, we do have some of these things that we can do right now.
Well, and this was one of the ones you and I kind of talked about last week. Um, but we, the Mahoney one is newer. There's some other abatement issues that he has in progress, but it's kind of early to know. Exactly how much that's going to be. So we were kind of trying to determine after talking with you guys, do you want to leave that whole two hundred and ten available for abatement costs? Um, I think it's a really great use of money and we put a lien on the property. So we get the money back and then it, it becomes sort of perpetually useful. Um, so I think, I don't think we should have it all go away, but we didn't know how much you guys would want to keep in there.
My whole goal with this is we get this, we get one shot at ARPA. How can we get it? If we spend it, how can we get it back? So that's been my thought process as we've gone through this.
So similar to the revolving loan idea.
Right.
It just keeps getting paid back and then we keep having it to use.
Correct.
So, and I think as often as we can make that happen, I think that's a great idea.
Well, and that, you know, you brought something up. We could really incorporate some of, um, Council Vasquez's ideas. Because all of that money is already moved to that community development fund that we created. So, you know, we could, we could potentially in the budget process this year, start allocating portions of that out to support, you know, volunteer programs and community programs. Things like that, that are for community development, if you will.
So I, I guess, yeah, if we, if we have a program that comes to us and they said, we, we want to do this, this community service work, can we get this? I mean, we could, I'm happy to work with anybody that comes to our office.
If I were to vote on this, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I would say that I would want to put this whole two hundred and ten and encumber it, even though it doesn't have a name to it yet. But I didn't want to make that decision without us bringing it up to council.
So also members comments on.
It's, you say, say that again?
I can, I can, we don't have a specific thing that's been ordered for it right now, but I believe that Trevor. Will be able to use this money by the end of the year, but I didn't want to fully encumber it without the council's permission because it's a pretty big chunk. So that two hundred and ten, but I'd be happy to put it over here so that we leave it and we don't mess with it. So I could just put the two ten.
I see we do that.
Yeah. Is that from, that's from ARPA?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, okay. There we go. Okay. So that just, so we're just going to leave that money alone. We're not going to mess.
What you're saying then, Ms. Horner is that that's kind of tied to what Ms. Vasquez wants to put together with youth involvement and.
We can use that money for that. Yeah. And it's already, if we consider it already spent and encumbered, it's already there. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that can be used for paint purchase or property cleanup and dump fees.
Start that right away.
All that kind of stuff.
I have something, um, I think it was you, Trevor, right? Last, last week you mentioned the city cleanup. Um, are we planning on using maybe ARPA funds for that or?
Um, I was going to, so I, I kind of went back and researched this a little bit and talked to my previous staff and I might have to walk back what I, what I said to everybody a little bit. Um. So one of the reasons, and Mr. Mayor, you talk, you asked me why we don't do this anymore. It's because we moved to a voucher system. The city has moved to a voucher system. So every city resident is entitled to one dump voucher per year. So they can fill up their vehicle and.
In a trailer.
Trailer or whatever it is.
Pick it up from city hall, you get one per year. And then you can take a load to the, um, machine landfill.
Often do they use that voucher or do they come in for that voucher?
Um, I don't, I, I, I'm not sure how many are, are left or what we have right now, but anybody who's, uh, city resident is entitled to one. Um, what's the problem I had, I was, when I was talking to all of our city staff would work these dump days before. Is because we would ask for some sort of proof of city residency, something like that. And what we would see is, um, our, our people who would bring their friends, maybe they didn't necessarily live in Sunnyside, but they'd bring two or three trailers full. They would bring, they would, they would be repeat and then we would say, no, you've already been here. We turn them away. They'd end up just dumping tires and glass and chemicals and all. It was, it was much more of a hassle than it was, than it was probably worth at the end of the day. Um, so that's, that was really the challenge that we saw with that whole program, um, in the past. Um, I mean, if it's something we still want to explore, we, we certainly can. We have a model for it. But that's why we don't do it anymore is because we've moved it to the, the voucher system. And like, uh, any of you are entitled to go get a voucher. Um.
I've used the vouchers every year, but there's a lot of people out there that don't know about the vouchers.
So, so maybe that's.
If you don't have a pickup. Then it's hard to go that route. And, uh. I don't know. I like the dump day, but I understand where you're coming from, you know?
Yeah.
People always abuse the. System dump.
And staff gets, I don't think, kind of, they, they end up with a, you know, with a skid steer out there at eight PM. Scraping up all the glass and broken junk off the ground and dumping it. And it's just kind of a, it turns into a bit of a nightmare.
And another concern that was brought up to me about that, and I had totally forgotten about it, is, um, that whole Japanese beetle presentation. If we're bringing yard waste in. And, um, we've been instructed that Japanese beetle is a concern in Sunnyside and we're not supposed to bring that to the landfill, then we need to, uh. Not cause a bigger problem there as well.
Land.
I think they separate that, right? Did they used to separate the landfill, the yard waste?
They're supposed to, but that was also one of the problems that was brought up during the dump days is that the yard waste wasn't always separated. They, people would just combine it in their trailers and they just dump it and that, that is a problem.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they did attempt to separate it though. I remember that.
Yeah. Yeah. Cause at, at the landfill, it needs to go in different places. So if, if it's all going to the same dump. It's, or in the dumpster here, it's, they can't separate it after that.
Right.
So it makes it complicated.
So how much money, sorry? How much money? Uh, is it the nine hundred and seventy-four that we're still working with?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, Ms. Horner?
Go ahead, Ms. Ralston.
Um, I, I wanted to. I see that there was, um, the utility bill assistance listed on the sheet. Oh gosh, I'm putting in the wrong. Um, how did y'all go about that? And I'm wondering if, and I know we've all heard about constituents or, you know, residents just, um. Having a hard time keeping up with their utility bills. Would it be an option to explore to put some of that money back into more of this assistance? And. How did y'all go about?
So this program was part of the COVID response when the government, the governor basically put a hold on people. Um, we, we weren't unable to turn people's services off and we, we couldn't charge late fees or anything during the whole COVID process. Um, one of the things that they allowed us to do with CARES Act money and ARPA funds was to assist people in paying for their utilities. Typically, we cannot do that. Um, we, we have to, there's, because of the gifting of funds rules, um. We can do like low income disability and senior citizen discounts. Those are allowed by law. But a lot of other things, um, are not unfortunately allowed. So you, you're supposed to set a rate. In such a way so as to make the, the, the utility maintainable. Um, so I don't believe that any of those programs are still, I don't think we're still allowed to do them unless they're within the, the bounds of the traditional. Low income disabled or senior citizens. But we could look at that. I don't know.
Sorry.
Um, uh, thank you. Um, one of the things that happened during, maybe it was during the COVID when people got behind on their, um, utilities. Is there was a way to particularly the water to, uh, kind of set it up in payments. So that you would try to stay, if you got behind, say a month, you'd pay, you could pay it in, in payment style. To keep you, keep, make sure that you were paying every month. And then eventually you would catch up, you know, just like anything on layaway.
We, we did, we.
That was maybe just during the COVID?
No, we, we'd actually have like budget billing, um, options for people now where they can pay a set amount every month. And we do. Um, offer payment plans when people have a leak or something or get behind. Um, we do have those programs already in place.
And, okay.
But, um, the council initially authorized, I think, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this program. Um, and it was, it was available all the way through the end of twenty twenty two. Um, I think they stopped it in twenty twenty two. Um, and we only had, and by that time, everybody's services were back to regular and people were having to pay. Um, we only used about just shy of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there was a whole hundred thousand dollars. That was allocated by the council as allowable for that use and we didn't have people take advantage of it.
And what did we do with those one hundred K that we still had left?
Though they're still in this chunk in this ARPA money. So this initial amount that was allocated was three fifty. Now, I mean, we just dumped it back down to the amount that it was.
Gotcha. Okay.
Ms. Ripley.
Um, you know. I was thinking of something to, uh, allocate the money for. Uh, the Habitat for Humanity, I went to that with the YVCOG and the Catholic Services. They're going to build, I think it was five or six houses here. And would there be a way to get a program to help? The people with the down payment at a low cost loan? And. Go. Something like that, you know, where it gets paid back and.
That's, that's part of Catholic charity's funding mechanism as well as they, they work with their, the people who are getting their home. They also work in. Getting the mortgages and everything for that house as well.
Okay.
So they, they do work with, with lenders and providers to, to kind of get those specialized mortgages, especially like the USDA, um, type of mortgages. They, they, they'll work with ensuring that they can get those type of things. So they're, they are kind of already filling that space right now.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
They also offer for the people to volunteer and help build their own houses.
Yeah.
And Habitat requires a certain number of hours of sweat equity for families, so.
I just thought of another thing. Sorry. I realized I didn't encumber that last hundred thousand for our building, um, business loans too. Cause you, you guys hadn't approved of them yet. But does the council still want to approve that additional hundred thousand dollars for more business rehab loans? Cause that was the amount initially allocated.
Revolving loan fund.
Yeah. At this point, you've only issued a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in loans. Is that correct, Trevor?
Yeah.
So there's still a hundred thousand there and I need to move it over if the council still intends to use it there.
I would say so.
I would say so. I like that.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that was very positive, uh, positively received by council last year. And I, I think I haven't seen anything from this council that would indicate that they want to change that. I, I think it's a great idea. Um, I'm looking forward to it. I mean, initially, you know, approving these loans, I'm looking forward to the next batch that we get to see. But, um.
We have four more queued up for you, so you'll see them soon.
Looking forward to it. I really am.
Me too.
Ms. Deputy Mayor.
Um, Mr. Sanchez, is, is there something that we could do to allocate money for more code enforcement? For say like a part-time code enforcer for this year? I mean, I know we, I get a lot of, you know, we need to clean up and then we really need to start, you know, issuing citations for. A lot of these, you know, violators.
I'll turn it over to Trevor, cause code enforcement's under him.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, no.
So, uh, I, so, so I'm going to need more information on this. So we have two code enforcement officers right now. So one of the things that code enforcement does not do, and this is something we can have a lot, much larger conversation about, we do not regulate ugly. So we do not regulate whether or not people paint their homes. We do not regulate whether or not, um, people have cars that have, if they're parked illegally in their driveway, we can't, and they, we can't regulate. uh people have cars that have, if they're parked illegally in their driveway, we can't, and they, we can't regulate whether or not those cars are in good shape, bad shape. However, shape, it doesn't matter. Um, we regulate weeds once they get to like eighteen inches or higher. That's what our code currently says. So we do not regulate ugly. But we can regulate other things. It just kind of depends uh how, how you want us to do, to, to go about it. Um, um, I'm, I'm always set, I'm, I'm always looking for examples of what um we, we know that there's graffiti. We try to cover up graffiti whenever we see graffiti. But um this morning, we had a fence, a car and a house that was tagged. So um it's just, it's a constant, like I said, it's a constant battle with those things. So we're, we're regularly looking for that. Um, things like shopping carts. Um, those things are, shopping carts, mess, messes created by maybe uh an unhoused individual. That's some, that's, that's treading, that's oftentimes can be a gray area because those things can be considered personal property. And we need to know whether or not, if we're seizing personal property from somebody, if we do take personal properties from somebody, we're legally obligated to hold it for forty-five days. So that's just something if we want to enter that space, we certainly can. I'm happy to. But we then, we're gonna have to find, it's probably gonna be down somewhere at the Public Works Facility where we store um people's things that we take from them. Um, so it, it just kind of depends where, where you wanna go with it. Um, so I'm, I'm all ears if you, if you, if you if you're, if there's thoughts and ideas out there.
Ms. Beeler.
Seventeen years ago, when I moved here, I actually worked for the city in code enforcement. And all I did was part-time work in the weekends. And my only job was to go to every yard sale.
Yeah.
And make sure all the signs were picked up.
Yeah.
And we need to get back on that, too.
So that's another thing, too, is we don't charge for yard sales. A lot of communities start, charge for yard sales. And that might be a, a, a way that we kind of make up for this. Is we, um, our yard sale permits are online now. That's something we moved to. Um, but we don't charge for any yard sales, so um, and we don't, we don't have code enforcement over the weekends. Um, so that's something we don't have either. Um, so it's something we can definitely think about. Typically, yeah, when it comes to the summertime, our code enforcement's out there Thursday, Friday, and then Monday, picking up yard sale boxes. That's what they do. That's what spend a bunch of time doing. Um, uh, uh, I, I don't, I have thoughts on that, but I, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
Well, my hesitation with using ARPA funds to fund positions is that we're on temporary positions for something that's going to be a more long-term problem solu- slash solution. Um.
Better.
I, so I.
And that has been council's position for a long time. We're very concerned about temporary money for a full-time.
Especially when we're on timeframes or where this needs to be used up.
But I think if, if, if we do something now and, and the public sees that we mean business, that we, you know, we, we wanna see, you know, there's a lot of codes in here for, for weed mowing, you know, like Mr. Beeler said. Um, there's a lot of stuff that just, it's not, they don't follow it anymore cuz we don't enforce it. And if they see, hey, you know, they got an, an uh part-time code enforcer, you know, for this year, let's, let's, let's pick it up, right? Let's, let's start issuing citations for stuff that we can.
Yeah, but that, that's always been the concern for council um is we don't wanna hire somebody for a year. We want to hire somebody and be able to keep them, especially if it's a full-time position, obviously. We wanna, we wanna be able to keep them working. It's just not, there's no incentive for a one-year position. I mean, why would anybody apply for that unless they're in between jobs or something like that? So that's been the concern. Um, so the trick would be that they would have to be able to um be self-funding. You know, with what they do, do they issue fines? Do the permits for yard sales, are they going to cover that? Um, you know, what, what are we gonna use to make that a permanent position that we can keep somebody on task all the time? Because we're starting into yard sale season, for example, and that's just one example. And um, yeah, we've got several kinds of offenders on that. We've got people who don't get permits. We've got people who have the perpetual yard sale that goes on forever. And then people who put the signs up and never take them down. You know, everybody's got a lot of energy to put a sign up. There's nothing left at the end of a yard sale. I, I don't like yard sales. I'm, I just don't enjoy them. And so at the end of the day, I'm done. I don't wanna put, take signs down. I can understand it, but they have to come down. And Ms. Warner, you had a comment?
Well, I just, I wanted to say, I, based on what Mr. Martin said, I'm wondering if what he was trying to say was, right now, there's not more work to do unless the council wants to change some of the enforcement in the, in the city code.
Right. I mean, so that, so that's, that's.
There's not enough work for another person right now.
I, I, I don't think there's enough to justify another part-time position. Um, um, what, well, one of the things, people are getting craftier. They're not putting their addresses or anything on. They're just putting a directional sign that says yard sale and with an arrow on it. And then they take down their yard sign, they're in their front yard at the end of the day, and then they're just left with a bunch of boxes all over town.
Friday, go pick all those up that don't have addresses.
That's what we do. Yeah, that's what we do um right now. But um, but yeah, so no, what's uh, what, what I'm, yeah, what I'm getting at is if we want to be harder on the codes, we certainly can. Um, we, we were gonna have to cut, go through those bit by bit. I mean, when we um, people aren't always at home during the day. So if somebody says, my neighbor's parked on their lawn and we drive past four times and we don't see any cars parked on the lawn, but they're parked on the lawn from, I don't know, eight P M, eight P M to six A M, and then we go back out there at six thirty and then they're not on the lawn. We don't, we're not necessarily gonna see that. Um, so uh, um, and there's also some other things we, we can't necessarily um look at either. If it's, if it's visible from the right of way, we can enforce it. If you're looking from your second-story window into your neighbor's backyard, we can't do anything about that. They have a reasonable right to privacy that if they don't invite us in, we're not going over there. So that shows they're just some of the things to think about as we're going at uh, uh, as we're going about this. Um, but if you want us to start looking at things like uh, everybody shall have a, if, a front yard. That's uh, that's a grassed front yard. That's at least, you know, fifty percent landscaped or something like that. We can definitely look at stuff like that. Um, but it's just, it just depends where, where and how we wanna get into it. Um, yeah, that's, that's just kind of my, my thought process.
I think we should visit, revisit the codes and, and just modify some things and see what should be updated and what we can do to better the city. I think we, that really needs to happen.
Okay. And the other thing, I'm, I'm always, I always want specific examples too. So if we're going into this, I want specific examples of what it is that there's been issues with. That way I can look into it on my end, either the MRSC or or, you know, reasonable rights to, to search and seize, that, that type of thing. Um, because there, there's a lot of gray areas in code enforcement and um uh, we have to be very careful about where we, what we get into.
Okay, so although this conversation is really interesting, but what we have done here is we've wandered off of the ARPA funding and what kind of projects we'd like to see the money that we have available go for. And so let's do our best. I know that all of this conversation is great. Um, but yeah, we've, we've, we've wandered kind of a long ways off of our purpose here and we do have two other points to cover. So let's try to focus on the ARPA funds, what you'd like to see happening right now. Um, I know I heard say, yeah, we've just getting, we're just getting started. We've got a lot of other things to talk about besides the youth. So let's kind of delve into some of that where the ARPA funds can go. And um then we've got to uh get to our goals and priorities. So, and I think that's gonna be a big conversation as well. So focus on ARPA funding. Ms. Vasquez.
I have a question regarding the landscaping. I see you have some abbreviations up there, like PD would be Police Department. Another was Fire Department, I believe, and the other one, I believe it's City Hall. And the Stackhouse Triangle. Are those just examples or are those the only four locations where you guys prioritize the landscaping?
I don't have an answer to that. That was, honestly, that was when Shane Fisher was still here, so I don't know if.
Back in twenty-two, when these, these were picked out, was from the previous Public Work Director. The only one that's left is, that we're doing here this spring is the, the triangle on Stackhouse. But the other ones, they were picked from the previous and we've done all, all those except the triangle, the Stackhouse Triangle.
And so for those who don't know what the Stackhouse Triangle is, you know, where Edison runs east and west and then you turn to go up the hill. That street is called Stackhouse. There's a little triangle in there. Um, there's that street that people will cut off to, to make that turn or to go up. Um, there's water there and at one time it was landscaped and then it stopped being watered and taken care of. And now it looks like a dry, dusty place. And so there were people who were concerned about that, that were bothered by it. And so staff said, hey, why don't we landscape that and get that going again? Um, but because it wasn't at the PD or the City Hall or Fire Station, it was less of a priority, but now they're looking forward to getting that done.
Yeah. All that, was there somewhere else that you were thinking about besides those?
Yeah, so I have a question. Right in front of like McDonald's, all that grass area, who takes care of that landscaping?
Across McDonald's, the city.
The city? Okay, and another question.
Across the street is the city, not the stuff that's at McDonald's, though.
No, no, yeah, across the street, across the street. I have a question. So you know the, the rusty old trucks and all that display? Who, who came up with that?
So I did a little research.
Miss Hart, information there as well.
Not exactly sure what year, but a few years back, the city and the American Legion. I think it's, it's their group. And they, they approached the city and, and I think uh they talked about different places where they could display some farm implements. The, the idea behind it was kind of like Crosser has the little ponies everywhere, um, other cities have murals. Um, their intent at the time was being that this is an ag place that some of this old implements would kind of give you the, the intent was to represent some of the history with ag around Sunnyside. Um, so then that kind of started it. From what I know, back at, at the time, that area across McDonald's and down, what was allocated for that? Um, what I have found out, now that I'm, I'm in my position and, and I've been talking with them, is that there was never an ILA or anything written. It was really more of a, kind of an agreement. And now um there are some that popped up in different places, which I've asked to just have them removed because that wasn't the original, or at least I had a meeting with them and found out because I didn't know. Like, maybe there was something that I didn't know. And that's how I found out that it was, it was more kind of a, uh, an agreement back with the previous city manager and, and the previous public work director about, well, actually not the previous, but a couple bidding managers before, before, yeah. So um, and that's kind of how it started. So at this point um what they told me is they wanna clean that up, which I'm working on with them on that. I have asked them to remove the ones that are on Sixteenth and Y V H. Um, so the idea that they gave me or the reason behind it was if people were eating at those fast food restaurants across the highway that um it was something that they could go across the, the highway and, and kind of just look at them. And their intent was to kind of clean them up and, and put maybe like a little plaque or something that, that told you what kind of a farm implement it was or what it was being used for. And that, that all sounds like a good idea. Um, they just haven't got to that point. And so I'm, I'm trying to work with them on trying to get that done and also pick up the other ones. Cause first of all, it needs to be safe for the public to even pull over and, and look at something like that. So that's one of the things that we talked about is I, you know, you also don't wanna put it somewhere where it isn't safe for people to walk. One, it's a highway. Two, there isn't a place to park. So really, it's not gonna be a good site. Um, so anyways, that's how that came to be.
Okay. Is there, is, so what would be the following steps to kind of like want to, to get to an agreement to remove that?
Well, first, it would be, which at the meeting that I had with them, I, I first, I, I told them to go back and kind of give me what their vision was. And then start with that. Once they kind of gave me the spots that they thought they wanted to use, then I would review those and then say, okay, that's a good spot or not, based on access, safety, and then how many can be put there? And then kind of work with what are we, what are we looking for? I mean, some of those things, I, I mean, you know, they just don't really have a place there. But I do think that certain things may be, you know, I mean, I, I guess if you wanna take the look at as far as you know, the historical um agriculture around the valley. If that's where we wanna go, if, again, because there isn't an agreement or anything, if you guys don't like them at all, then that's, that's another route.
But I will say, these guys are committed to this project. They are very committed to this project. I have been cornered multiple times, including yesterday as a result of the meeting that you had. Um, so yeah, they're very committed to this project and they will take it personally if uh, if we decide not to continue with that. So um, you know, their idea is good, but they haven't followed through all the way yet.
Yeah. And I guess I just bring it up because I drive to Grandview constantly cuz my sister lives there. And every time I'm driving into Grandview, the landscaping looks so beautiful. The grass looks very healthy and the trees and it makes you feel like you wanna stop there and have like a picnic is um session, right? Um, but then you, we, then I drive back into Sunnyside and the landscaping's not that appealing. And I, I, my question is, how can we do better with the landscaping?
Well, one is those little trees are not that old, so it's gonna take some time to get them to the ones like Grandview. And there's no way we can change that. That's. But as far as adding more trees or adding something else, if that's something you wanna do, but either way, it's gonna take time for those trees to get to that point. Just the ones here in downtown, in the first section of, of Sixth Street, those are already ten, eleven years old. And, you know, just, you can tell, I mean, the ones in Grandview have been there for, for years. And so um, so the trees that are planted along there, um, again, there's, there's only so many. Um, in order to get that, we would either, one, add more trees and give it time. Um, the grass, I mean, same thing. I mean, right now, they're starting um, just watering it, keeping it clean, mowing it. Um, but other than that, as far as landscape goes, unless we wanna spend more money on something and what that is that you want um, it's up to you, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Frosa had her hand up.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanna, as soon as y'all are done, I don't wanna.
Oh.
Okay, no, we've.
On the subject of landscaping.
Is, is it about landscaping?
No, it's about ARPA funds.
Okay.
I mean, sorry, uh, some, another point to.
Okay, so Ms. Vasquez, have you completed your?
Yeah, no, so I just wanted to ask, so how, does the money seem, how, how's landscaping been for you guys? Do you feel like you guys have money, the?
That, no, we, I mean, as far as that comes out of the general fund. So typically, again, like we talked before, the PD takes most of the general fund, so. So.
Okay.
I mean, when, when you're thinking about public safety, when you're thinking about everything, um, something like that would be something that, again, we would have to try. But typically, when you're talking about street improvements and, and potholes and everything else um, landscaping, it's, it's a little harder to, I mean, to, to have the money to do. Um, obviously, now that we have some ARPA money here, that's something that you wanna allocate some money towards, which I agree that, I mean, either whether at the entrances or whatever, adding landscape. But again, those are things that if, if it's priority for you, then that's something that we can do. But typically, yes, we don't have the extra money just for, for, you know.
Okay.
A bunch of trees.
That, so that was my question, just because I have gotten a lot of complaints of landscaping from the community and how we should probably be stepping up some more.
Well, and if I remember right, um, back in the year when Grandview did a lot of that stuff, it was under some Arbor thing that they started years ago before that. Yeah, so that's how they came to be with all the, all that.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got others that wanna speak to this and Ms. Frosa, you're next. Not to this topic, but to ARPA.
Yeah, and, and if we don't use the ARPA funds, because I know we have to hyper-focus on the ARPA funds, um, cuz we need to get those allocated. But um, remember that we also have access to state funds. Actually, I was having a conversation with, with Chief Lehman uh, earlier today about, you know, our access to state funds. So I mean, I think that's another conversation that I would love to come back to the council and to department heads and um, es- especially because I, I don't know how the previous council and city manager um, connected with our state to be able to uh get access to some of those state fundings that I know can be used for road projects, um, landscaping, you know, potholes, um, improving our walkways, trails, you know, um, all of that sorts of, 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 of things that I think our community can definitely benefit. Um, so I'd love to come back to that conversation in the case that we don't have the ARPA funds to um, to allocate to uh lands, any more landscaping now. Um, but just to kind of keep that in mind. But I did wanna come back to so, to, to some other points cuz my focus and, and Ms. Warner and, and, and council, please help me with, with these thoughts. Because I know that there's, in, in my heart, I would love to be able to formulate or allocate some of these funds to community support services. Um, I know we just had the discussion about the water bill. I think you mentioned we can no longer visit that. That was a specific amount of money. visit that. That was a specific amount of money that was allocated just for that. Um but I know we have huge food insecurity. I mean, have have we thought about using some of this mu- some of these monies to go into food insecurity? I know you do a lot of work with the with the police foundation and even before then. But I mean, there's, I mean, we have food insecurity that we're battling with. I know, I mean, if people want to want help with starting up a small businesses, I know some of those permitting fees can get a little tedious. I mean, Councilor of us, because you could probably speak to that since you're working on your small business right now. Um you know, the animal shelter is a huge one that we still haven't touched on. Um but some ideas on how we can use some of these funds to alleviate some of the financial burdens that our community is currently experiencing.
I I am open to any ideas that you guys have. There's nothing that says that we cannot use this these funds for that, as long as it is something that is allowable under ARPA as governmental funds. In particular, to food, I don't know. I would have to do some research. I'm sure that there's some sort of welfare programs um that are allowable. I just don't know that we have anything developed. And whether or not we could get something developed in time to use ARPA money on that, I'm not sure about, but we can always develop those programs, you know, in the future as well.
I just want to put my two cents in for the the animal animal shelter as well. I used to be on the um Yakima Community Society's Board of Directors for a while. And um animal shelters are not cheap and they're not cheap to operate and not cheap to maintain. So um you're looking for for the size and scope, the the one that you probably want to build here, you're going to probably be looking in the ballpark of maybe seven fifty is probably what you'd be looking at. So that's just, I'm just going to throw that out there right now to get everything all said and done, the ventilation, the operating rooms, the holding.
I I think HLA was oh oh like one point three.
Yeah, so that I'm 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 on the
That was just to build the building.
Yeah, I know we've got operated yet.
Yeah, so that's just something to think about, yeah.
Then you got to think about the Humane Society is not uh not doing too well. I mean, they're not accepting animals and
Animal rescue is not a money-making endeavor by any means of the
It's a kind of a pit hole. I mean, I'm an animal lover, but you, yeah, it uh
Yeah, that's some of the frustration, some of the things that we want to do, that's wonderful stuff, but it's really expensive. And when you start looking at it, and some of the other stuff, um think, one of the things that's my biggest frustration with uh after I got on city council, finding out how long it takes to get things moving and get it done. It's a slow process with the bids and getting that done. I mean, it can take a lot longer than in the private sector. Um you know, I run my own business and and what happens? I make a decision, it is enacted today and off I go. Um with city government, it can take a very long time to get that stuff all approved. And then, of course, you've got to get the rest of council to agree with you and all of that sort of thing. So it's it's uh it's a lot more frustrating, that sort of thing. Um I I like the concept, Ms. Frosa, of of doing that sort of stuff. And if we as a city have the ability to do that sort of stuff or partner with somebody who can help us and maybe we can help them to do that sort of thing, um I'm all in favor of that.
Yeah, and I'm not too um uh well versed on all of the different restrictions of ARPA, so I look to y'all to kind of inform me on that, but um you know, our firefighters also need, you know, more gear. Um is that something that we can look into?
So that was actually something I was going to bring up. I appreciate you bringing it up, counselor, as a um so one thing, if this is appropriate time to speak. If you kind of go through, we, prior to me filling in my position, um the fire department didn't have a lot of engagement in the um ARPA spending process, and Jamie might be able to provide some more clarification on that. I don't know if that was pre your time, but definitely pre my time. But anyways, um we had made a small request um at that time for a for a piece of equipment for the ladder truck, which was honored, purchased and put into service. Um but that was the extent of it. So um about a year ago, um the former city manager pretty much said, hey, the fire department hasn't asked for anything. So we're going to earmark a hundred thousand dollars for the fire department to use for equipment. Um you guys see on there, we did when we were got approval to purchase a new engine um in an effort to not have to steal for uh equipment from other apparatus, just completely outfit a new apparatus. We use the uh the ARPA funds that were allotted to us to accomplish that. Um Jamie, you might go up just a little bit, because we did have a uh remaining balance out of a hundred that we were allotted. I don't remember the exact dollar figure.
You you've spent most of it down to this thirteen.
Okay, yes. So um my my request was either with that um or potential reallocation, there are a few things that have come up recently um regarding equipment that is uh is an immediate need of the fire department. Uh one of which is um I'm waiting on a uh ILA draft from the City of Yakima Fire Department to present to you. Um I haven't said a whole lot, so I'm waiting for that from them. Um but what it will look like is it'll look like some cooperation between City of Yakima um and another department in our hazardous materials response, as well as our technical rescue response. Um I won't want a whole lot of detail because I don't want to, you know, ruin the spoil, you know, spoiler alert, right? Um but uh but with that requires um a little bit of additional uh equipment to be able to participate to that to that capacity and those and those um operations. And so I guess my request is at the very least to retain the remaining balance of of the allotted hundred thousand dollars to use for equipment. Um and if we are looking for another avenue um to allocate some of these funds, I believe what uh Counselor Frosa was alluding to was it has been the goal and desire of our firefighters um for many years to have an additional set of turnout gear. Um I won't get on my soapbox of the carcinogens and things that we're exposed to, which is, you know, why we wear the personal protective equipment that we do. But unfortunately, when we do get exposed to those, we have to uh decontaminate our gear, which in essence puts that firefighter out of service. Um while the gear is clean and washed and so forth. However, if they had that second set of gear, uh it wouldn't take them out of service. They'd be ready for duty with that second set immediately following. So um but with that, of course, just like everything, there is an added cost to that. The average set of turnout gear is about thirty six to thirty eight hundred dollars a set with a shelf life of about ten years.
How many staff do you currently have?
Uh currently, we have fifteen career staff, about as many volunteers. Um but we do have um uh we are budgeted and working on filling, so we do have a a budget for eighteen line staff.
You would need about seventy thousand dollars for all your full time.
Correct. So to to purchase an additional set, that would be, you know, thirty eight hundred dollars times eighteen.
Thank you, Ms. Warner.
Yeah.
Mr. Bealer.
I don't do mental math, so I appreciate that.
You got to estimate cost on being fully hazmat compliant?
So that is what we're working on right now. Um we actually have um the last few of our staff members are going to become fully hazmat technician certified. Um they were supposed, the class was supposed to take place uh middle of last month, literally three days before we got notified that due to the instructor that be able to make it, it has been postponed for April truth the next couple of weeks. I don't have the exact date off the top of my head. Um once we go through that, it'll be a refresher for some initial certification for others. That'll give us a better idea of kind of the the trends, if you will, and hazardous materials response. We are pretty well equipped in the hazmat world at this point. Um it's the technical rescue side that we are very much lacking. But um but as far as what we need, we will have a much better idea of that at the end of the month, once we get all of our, uh the last bit of our staff up to speed on on current uh training techniques and
Not to put you on the spot, but for technical rescue equipment, do you even have any idea out of left field? Well, how much you're talking about?
We're looking at just for technical rescue equipment, we're looking at about seventy five hundred dollars.
Seventy five hundred?
Yeah. So that and that's that's on the very um
There you go.
Go look at this, it's
Does that include a
Oh, no, seventy five hundred. I mean, I'll take
Seventy five hundred.
He put seventy seven five. I will gladly
Put the seventy thousand for the turnouts there, too.
Thank you very much. That is accurate.
She's right with you there.
I'm trying to keep up with the conversations here.
Yeah, put me on the spot. You got sweaty palms and everything.
I can take it out as council makes Just trying to keep the numbers running.
Deputy Mayor.
Chief, it's the seventy seven and five, is that including the thirteen thousand that you wanted back originally?
Well, that would be encompassed within that amount, yeah.
Okay. I mean, I don't see a problem if 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 council is okay, you know, with the seventy seven, whatever you guys need to purchase that extra, you know.
So yeah, so what what, based on that, that would allow us to purchase a second set of of personal protective equipment for all of our career staff, which would be huge. Um I cannot stress that enough. Um and two, that'll allow us to get us up to speed with our technical rescue, which would bring even more excitement to me to present to you our ILA proposal here soon. So um that would be much appreciated by the fire department, I can tell you.
Chief Habrick, if we can give back to you all for everything you all do for the city.
So I'm seeing a lot of nods, and I think that's um you know, I think that would equate to a direction from council on that one. I don't see any objections here. Um any of us, any of you who have ever had the opportunity to participate in that hammer training program that you the two of you did recently, if you get the opportunity to do that, um I encourage you to do that. That will open your eyes um to the world of firefighter. Um it is not what you see on television. It is uh much more intense. And so
Do they have a virtual version of that? Because I know physically, there's no way that I could even
The hard part is it's hard to simulate eight hundred degree temperatures. So uh
But I really, really would love to be able to do that. So
Yeah, I can.
It's it's uh it is amazing to me. So I would love to have done it a few years ago, but there's no way I can now.
Well, Counselor, if you are interested, we have uh I'm waiting on the exact time, but it's not quite what the what the Counselor Fausto and Deputy Mayor of uh Galvan experienced, but we do are are going to be doing a drill on April nineteenth. Um the uh Sunny Side Fire Department, along with um Sunny Side PD and a couple of Navy agencies, are going to be doing a small uh MCR mass casualty drill um involving a bus. We've had some cooperation with the school district and the transportation division. Um and we'll be conducting a full-scale um drill there. So we would encourage every one of you to be present, but especially like some exposure to the happenings of the fire and police services.
Many, many years ago as a reporter, but yes, I would love to do that.
Yep, and once I get um the exact uh Chief Lehman, do we have a timeframe on that? I apologize, I don't have it off the top of my head.
We do, hang on. It is gonna be, I I have eight, but I think we're starting at nine. I think I have, we have to be there, but I think Yes.
Ma'am. And then I know we've had some interest from Senator Patty Murray as well, who's it's going to be at TP Auto Wrecking. They've allowed us to go back and utilize their facility um and uh conduct the uh if the training back.
If you go down Outlook Road, just past TP, the Fordice, so take Fordice down, it's going to be actually behind their fenced in one. And uh we should be done by noon, so.
April nineteenth?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, Friday morning.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, all sorts of opportunities to learn about our first responders and what they go through and what life is like for them, so.
That number looks good, Mr. Mayor.
I think that um what I'm seeing is um a lot of head nodding from council members that they're approving of this one. So I I'm seeing this one as a real positive thing from council. Um so I would, I would say, yeah, continue to move forward on that one.
Okay, so is that eight thirty five is what we have?
That's what we've got.
That's what you have left.
I would like to hear from uh Chief, PD Chief. Uh to see what, you know, what what he still needs to put in place for safety.
Um realistically, probably twenty thousand. Um we've got some SWAT guys that we need to finish outfitting. Uh we've gotten most of their equipment. And then as we're hiring people, we're finding that our line item for gear is dwindling quick, because we're we're down to five openings, I think. Uh we had eleven uh uh less than a year ago. So um as we're outfitting those folks with uh guns and, well, we bought the guns, so you saw that on there. So that's allocated. But uh the gun belt, um the uniforms, the the vest, the the helmet they have, all of that kind of stuff, and we're probably talking five grand an officer, at least. Um so but by twenty grand would handle that. The big one that we're going to have coming up is uh an upgrade to the jail security door system that we've worked on. Um that might be a two hundred thousand dollar project. So whether that gets done this year or not, I don't know. We're we've got two vendors, one that can come in and do the whole thing, one that pieced it out to about twenty different subcontracts. The problem with that one is if we have a problem, who do we call? So but they were about uh well, sixty thousand cheaper than the other one. So um but the one company does uh they spec- specifically do jail doors, systems. They're the ones that we're looking at. Their two hundred and two thousand was the last bid we got, so that that bid is probably seven months old.
You say two hundred K?
Two hundred and two thousand. I don't know if we're quite ready to I mean, if we want to put that here or not.
Well, we're gonna, it it will be a cost that the city has to assume at some point. So I guess it's whether or not council wants to try to do that this year with ARPA funds or not.
Or can we allocate them?
We would have, we, as long as we were in a contract with one of those companies and we determined a procurement method before the end of the year, we could do that.
I know Commander Guzbi right now is working on getting the the two quotes put together and the benefits, one versus the other. The problem is, we may have to, we may have to, because the size of the project and the cost, we may have to post it in the paper. I don't know what we'll get for bids after that, but um right now, the the two companies, that's what we've got, so.
If if it's two hundred thousand or more, it will have to go to formal bid, I think.
Right. If if I remember correctly, during the um tour, right, you said that this is since something new, this is something that it's it was cheaper to do back in the day, but throughout the years, it just keeps getting more
The first time we got a bid for this was probably five years ago, and I think it was sixty five thousand. Then uh that trigger wasn't pulled for whatever reason. I wasn't in the position to pull the trigger. And another bid was gotten, uh I think, two years ago, and it was in the neighborhood of a hundred and forty. And then we got a bid a few months back, and it was about two hundred and two. We're outside that thirty days, they could come back and say more. I don't know, the company's out of Colorado.
I think in in order to save money in the long run, we might
Right. Yeah, you know, five years ago, we had a council that was reluctant to to pull the trigger on that one, you know, and and PD was coming with a lot of requests at the time. And so that one was pushed back for whatever reason. Um but there was a period of time when there was a lot of bait on council about um what are we going to do with the PD? I mean, how do we fund this? And we had a couple of council members who really didn't want more money going to the police department. They really wanted the police department to fight overtime and save some money that way. But um that's water under the bridge. That was five, six, seven years ago. And we are here today. So if this council wants to fund that, we are absolutely able to do that. This is our priorities that we are working on, and um we ran for office for a reason, and so
I mean, I think it's something safety, right? We we make sure, yeah, we're safe in here.
Without going into all the details, it needs to get done.
Yes, I say we allocate it.
Say we do it.
We'll set it up in there, and I'm I'm again, seeing heads nodding that we're in agreement. One of the things that I've appreciated over the last two or three years is the council members' commitment to public safety and first responders and the willingness to step up and take the steps that are necessary. And if we've got the ARPA money and this is a legal use of those funds, and this is, this is a one-time expense that we probably won't have to expend again for another ten or twenty years.
As long as we do the maintenance on a regular basis like we should have been doing.
That's uh that's got to become a priority as well.
There somewhere.
I miss the personnel changes, all of that determination, some kind of vanishes.
The system that's there now is original with the building from ninety six.
So it's due.
So, all right, so we've been an hour and forty five minutes on item A. Is there more that we need to talk about with ARPA funds?
I I got one thing, um the IT, I like to touch based on the IT. I know I I spoke with Dennis and I see that the two hundred fifty hasn't been used, but we need it desperately with with different equipment, different server. So I'd like to kind of touch base on that to maybe give it back the whole two fifty or less. I mean, if if we're not gonna, if we don't use ARPA, or we're gonna use the general fund to
The cybersecurity is, we're talking safety again.
So Dennis, did you want to comment on that a little bit?
Going to blank here right now. What? Sorry about that.
The servers for the upgraded security.
The two fifty that that's allocated, or was, yeah, it was allocated.
Oh, right, that's for the upgrading. I'm sorry. Took me a second to catch up with everything that's going on. That's more for the infrastructure and the servers for uh uh the requirements of what's going on now as far as the uh network and everything else. Sorry about that. Took me a minute to catch up.
You just never know when we're going to put you on the spot, sir.
Pretty much, we need to upgrade, right? The 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 system that I see, so we need the the money, whether it comes from ARPA or it comes from the general fund, I say we keep it in ARPA.
Yeah, a a lot of what's in in here now is is basically been just um maintained. It has not been upgraded as far as the the uh capabilities of like the network and and the switches and everything else. So a lot of the stuff is just fighting itself and waiting and stuff, so. You know, like I said, with the cameras and everything else, that 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 requires a lot more of the bandwidth and stuff, so. You know, and to get us up for security, because a lot of it's so outdated, there's no more patches for it. So a lot of it's got serious flaws that way.
And you did a a server upgrade last year, and it was about eighty thousand, is that right? And you did a, a server upgrade last year and it was about eighty thousand, is that right? Or was it? A hundred and eighty thousand, maybe, sorry. And that server is already used up, is that correct? Like space wise?
It's getting close.
Sorry, sometimes I have to talk him through, so he remembers what he, what he had to say. We're, we're out of space, basically.
Miss Roshan?
Oh, yeah.
You had your hand up, I'd say.
Um, two things, um, does that entail? Or do we have money set aside for this? But we need a major website renovation. Oh, okay. I, I take it we do. Um, so do we have money set aside? That's not ARPA money that we, that we, or could we tap into this for that project?
I don't know that we have.
We all look at each other, yes.
I don't know that we've actually had money set aside specifically for that. I don't know, Jackie, do you have any?
It was a product that Elizabeth wanted as a priority, but I don't know if it was um, in the budget.
Was funded.
Never was funded, okay.
So if that's something that the council wants to do.
Yeah. And I do have um, quotes from vendors, but um, I am looking at. Some records and I think I have to send a, an RFP for that, so I'm gonna have to go back. So when the new city manager, whoever comes in, I, I can start it now, but it just depends on whatever direction. So I'll have to start that over.
More or less, what, what were the quotes?
Well, we have a contract with um, Civic Plus, which is our current vendor, and. There is a revamp included in our agreement, but there is, it steps. So the additional, like a whole revamp is like ten thousand dollars. Um, and then the others were like fourteen. It just depends on what we want.
Set aside, say, twenty? A website?
And then I also had that um, records request software. I don't know if that was ever funded through the budget either. So if, if, if there's funds left, um. Again, that's probably like fourteen thousand. The, the highest bid that I researched, the highest quote that I received was fourteen thousand for that. I don't know if you'd like to add that here.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Records requests, um, those are growing in number, um, more and more frequently, larger and larger scope. And I think it is going to be one of those things where we are obligated just for the peace of mind and sanity of staff. To get that software up and running as soon as possible.
Okay, there's just, I was.
Ms. Ripley.
What about translator equipment? Can we put that down on this?
I don't know why not. I think that, I think that falls under the scope of ARPA funds, because one of the big things is to. Benefit the community. And if we're going to do interpreting, I think that is part of benefiting the community. I don't know.
No, I, it definitely qualifies. I think what we were sort of waiting on to pin this down was whether or not we were gonna be able to use an app. Where people would use their own equipment and we would need equipment or some sort of service. And so I think we're still in limbo, cause. It wouldn't make sense to go and buy a bunch of equipment if we end up choosing a different path that, that doesn't utilize it.
Well, I know I'm definitely in favor of, of this idea of uh, an, an app. It seems as if everyone's got a cell phone anymore. And even if it's pay-as-you-go, it's a smartphone, it seems like. But then people can download an app and then it will work together. And I'm still looking forward to getting the information from Ms. Vasquez that she's got, cause it sounds as if that's something that could work really well for the city. And work really well for the audience members. I mean, if they put their headphones in and can listen to it being interpreted, although as I read the uh. You know, the, the footnotes or whatever you call that, um, it's not always real accurate. Ms. Roston?
Oh, actually, Ms. Vasque, or Counselor Vasquez, you had a.
Oh, yes, I was gonna say, so the church already sent me the app. However, the leaders who are in charge of it haven't been able yet, haven't gotten in contact with me. I reached out again, but I have the website, but it looks like the, there's different options, like it's, there's one that's city governance, there's one that's church. There's different categories, so you'll have to go in there and kind of get an estimate, because they do charge a fee.
Okay.
And so it's linked to our website. So I was trying to get in contact with the, with the translating department from Tri-Cities. That way they could kind of explain some more, but they haven't gotten back. But they, but someone else from the church was able to send me the website.
Okay, so.
That's all I have.
You could get that to uh. She can share, she can share that with all of us and we can investigate that.
Jackie, didn't you say that Language Line has an app as well?
No, oh, it does, Zoom, Zoom would be an app that you download on your phone and we can use Language Line or Dynamic. Language and they can be on a separate channel within our Zoom. Um, meeting and somewhat they're interpreting and let's say you needed interpreting, so you would just turn on your phone, connect to Zoom. And set your settings to Spanish and it would interpret. So yeah, it is. Yeah, so it's Zoom, same thing.
Okay. Ms. Roshan, you have another question?
No, I was just gonna ask, uh, if, if say, it seems like we're leaning to go with the app services, if it's Counselor Vasquez um. Option, or if it's the one that you had already listed, uh, Yakalin. Um, do, do we have an idea of a ballpark number? Like if, because the translating services are still gonna charge regardless if we uh, buy additional. Uh, equipment or not.
So Zoom is just five dollars.
Oh.
And then what Language Line or Dynamic do, or one of the other interpreting services would charge us per hour? Um, I know that. I haven't talked to the vendors that would actually have someone physically here. I haven't talked to them about the option of. Having them just hook up to Zoom and then just interpreting there, but I'm sure that it would be an option for them. Be easier, their interpreter can be home and, and connect to our Zoom call and just do it that way.
And the app is called Interactio, and I sent it to you, to your phone.
Cause if we can, yeah, if we can get an amount and use some of this for that, I think that'd be great.
Yeah, and I like the concept of not having to buy a ton of equipment and store it, maintain it, and then have it outdated in two years.
Dennis likes that too, but he's quiet.
I agree.
Nod your head a little bit, so we know you're still alive.
Um, so. Uh, Counselor Vasquez, I don't know if you wanna take this one, but um, I know um, we've been in discussion about um. And, and Counselor Ripley, and Ca- and Counselor Hart, the senior center.
Right.
The senior center. So we've all been in the senior center and, and we know the great things it offers to our seniors and the Lions Club and. Um, so, Raoul, Mr. Sanchez, what do? How, could we dip into some of the, is there renovations that the senior city, center, senior center needs? That um, are imminent that we can use some of this money for? Um, I mean, you to attend the senior center, I don't know if y'all would have an idea as well as.
Well, I know that, that, that it seriously needs to be repainted. It seriously needs to have its roof looked at. Um, I don't know if it's anywhere on our, I can't remember if it's on our. Um. Repair list that we, do we maintain a repair list of city, city buildings?
I don't think it is, but I, I agree that it could use a good paint job. Um, last year, we replaced the flooring in there. Um, this year, I think it was, we replaced the dishwasher. And there's been some other plumbing little things that have been done. Um, there's really not a lot else going on in there, but I agree that it, it could use a, a good paint job. Um.
I just wanna, would like to have that roof examined.
We can look at that too.
Um.
But anyways, yeah.
I think there's some leakage going on.
Okay, no, I'm not aware of that one, but yeah, we can look at that.
Um, one of the things too is, is um. Could use a couple more handicap. Um. Painted places, parking stalls. Um, the, the ramp is really great. We, we, we love the ramp. Um, V- Vicky, you had um, some things that you brought up too.
I had some concerns about the bathroom faucets. They were being, they were left on, but I have, I. You went and checked and.
Yeah, we looked at it and nothing was leaking, so, yeah, they.
When I was there that day, it was leaking all day and somebody told me, well, if you turn it to the right and to the left and then put it in the right spot in the middle, it won't leak. And so.
Yeah, well, I mean, replacing some faucets, I guess, yeah, that's.
That's no big deal.
No.
Yeah.
That's, that's basic maintenance and that.
Mm-hmm. But I think, I think some, some, when you were talking earlier about landscaping, there's some landscaping that could be done there. Um, as well. But certainly the roof and, and the paint job, it's, it's really desperate for that. It, it's a nice building, a nice facility. We're using it a lot more and um.
There's two hundred and seventy-five thousand unallocated dollars still. So would you guys like to put, just put a number towards?
I don't have a clue how much that would be.
Maybe twenty-five? Well, let me. More like probably a hundred would be, yeah, the roof and the painting. I would say to be on the safe side, probably about a hundred thousand.
I would think so too.
Yeah, I would, I would agree.
Just thinking about the.
And the last question I had again for the fire chief, the living quarters, I know they're relatively new, but are they complete now?
Are you referring to the uh, the resident side where that was kind of? They're complete.
What do they need?
Uh, there, we need more of them, is actually what we need. So, yes, so um. The issue that we're having um, is despite the firehouse being, had been uh, added to and remodeled. Well, about a decade ago, less, I mean, not too long. We uh, we've outgrown it. Um, that's unfortunately a, a much bigger problem, if you will, than what we'd be able to do. Um, but uh, but yeah, at this point, we actually could not add to our staffing. Um, or at least our, our shift staffing, because we don't have anywhere to house them. So um, but as far as the resident quarters are concerned, um, they are complete for their, for their. How they were designed, they're complete for that design. The rooms are not complete in the sense the walls do not go floor to ceiling. Uh, that's. Code's issue, but yeah, but for further, what they were designed for, they are complete. So yes.
Okay. We go, okay, I'll give this harder chance here for a second.
No, no.
Oh, I, well, I mean, I know that my departments are typically administrative, so we don't have a lot of asks. So I sit here and do the numbers for everybody else. So I'm not gonna ask for anything for myself except for my pet project. I would really love if we could take some of that hundred and seventy-five thousand and put it towards the animal shelter. I spoke with the chief today. Um, I do think that we could retrofit the railroad property in one way or another to make it work at least temporarily. And I would love if we could put some money into that.
I agree.
That's all.
Okay. Mr. Martin, you had something to say or? Okay.
I, I agree, I agree. I, I love the animal shelter project. It's obviously a, a huge need here. Um, I, I mean, you've seen it, I hear about it every single day. The chief hears about it every single day. I think the animals, uh, I think we need to figure out something to do with that, absolutely.
Mm-hmm, and we need to get going.
Is, is this, is this a hundred, a hundred thousand to retrofit the Tucker, the Tucker sellers?
Um, I, I don't know how much it would cost. We still haven't gotten in there to look at the building. Um, so it would depend on what shape the building is in and it also is gonna depend, I don't believe that the existing building. Is necessarily gonna be usable for the, for a fire station expansion when we get to that point. So I think we'll have to build a new building anyway. Um, so it would just be getting in there and figuring out what it would cost to retrofit. And I, I think in reality, when you're talking about the whole ventilation, as the chief discussed a little bit earlier. Um, I think it would probably cost uh, probably that hundred and seventy-five thousand.
It would easily take that by the glass.
Okay.
Plus any donations we've got going.
And I can get the number on the donations and stuff to you guys as soon as possible, but then at least we, we might have a number and a goal for that fundraising. If we knew how much we were short by, so.
Okay, yeah, that would be great. Thank you, Ms. Horner. Um, I just kinda wanna go back to the firefighter, because uh, y'all are just so dear to my heart. Um, a- and so is the police department, um, and all of our departments, but just one, I did, did. That, the que- was the question answered and did we find a solution to that? I know you said you needed so, some more. I don't, I don't know what we were talking about.
New, bigger building.
Well, so the, the short answer, yeah, to, to more or less answer Counselor Bier's question. With adding to the answer is, ultimately, due to our cover, our response area and the size of our, our, well, our call volume and our, our. Inability to grow our staffing, the, the next thing that we need to do, and this is obviously a substantial project. But is, is to, to build a second station. Um, it improves response times, it'll improve our ISO ratings. It'll allow us to add more appropriate staffing for our call volume. Um, I mean, I could, I, I will not get on my soapbox due to time. But you know, i- if money was not an object, which we know it always is, um, the easiest. Most ideal solution is to add a, a secondary station.
And we've also talked about when they develop the Muntz and property.
That is correct, sir. That, we've, we've discussed on, on both, if you look kind of the extremes of the town, so. Yeah, and if, if you go through a, a standard of cover model, which again, I won't get into the, the fire service jargon, but you look at it from, you either cover your response area from the inside out. Or the outside in. Um, right now, we're doing the inside out. However, as our city continues to grow. That inside out response time gets longer and longer and longer. So the best solution is then we, okay, now we approach it, we've gone inside out, now we go outside in. So the next station is typically gonna be. More on the outskirts, if you will. So you have that, that, that coverage kind of from both sides, which again, expites response times. But we looked at the Tucker Sellers uh, property being on the edge of town, that direction, and then the Muntz and property more or less being on the other edge, the, the east edge of town.
Okay. So, so.
Sorry, the, the, but the other east.
That amount right there, definitely cover gear. Yeah?
We're good on that.
Okay, we're good. All right, wanna triple check on that?
Yep. All right, so what we've done, we brought ourselves down to eighty-seven dollars left over.
Eighty-seven dollars.
Eighty-seven dollars and then, then the, the, then, thank you for bringing that up.
Eighty-seven dollars for office supplies and we're gonna go, right? Now, that was a joke.
I can update the numbers and obviously when I, we report to the, the government and we do our annual report, we do. Get into all those actual dollars and cents and believe me, we'll spend all of it, but um, I, I can get this updated. Probably for council next week, if you guys are comfortable with these um, these updates.
I think so, and I think what we've done is good work here tonight. Thank you to everybody, council members for your input and your thoughts and staff for the work that you've done and your contributions. I know several of you said, yeah, I don't have really anything, but yet at the same time, um, you know, there's ways that uh, this money can benefit your departments as well. So this is. This is good. So thank you everybody for that. Moving on to the next item, twenty twenty-four city council goals and priorities. I wanna say that I feel like I got a really good feel for city council goals and priorities through this last discussion. Um, you guys kind of shared what's important to you with the ARPA money, and I think that translates through all the way through everything that you guys are doing, because. What you brought up was not necessarily ARPA money. We kind of wandered a little bit, but I, I was able to hear an awful lot about what's important and near and dear to your heart. You know, with Ms. Vasquez and the youth involvement and, and that sort of thing. Um. So you guys shared an awful lot of what's on your heart, but I'd sure like to hear at this point a discussion about our goals and priorities, because. Council's goals and priorities really impact how staff, how the manager. Lays things out. It's a big part of the government, of the government, I'm sorry, the budgeting process. And so this is where we need to talk about what some of our priorities are. And a year ago, twenty twenty-three budget retreat priorities.
So this, this conversation was had two years ago, so it was for the twenty twenty-three budget in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so you can see what was, what was important. Uh, twenty twenty-two, we had just had the shooting at Cinco de Mayo and that was fresh and a raw wound on everybody's. Mind. And so crime, gangs, gun violence. Um, we took a lot of steps in that direction. The flock cameras, the body cameras, and we really tried to help the police department to be able to cope. A lot of laws changed during twenty twenty. And were implemented, and so we had to figure out ways to work with the law and still be effective. So we got the drones and different things. So that, that was encouraging. Um. Vehicles, I mean, this comes back to code enforcement again, doesn't it? Um, you know, you got the old junk vehicles that are out there, loud mufflers racing around. And again, this weekend, if you sat outside at all this weekend, you heard the loud mufflers, you heard the racing around. Um, part of me says, yes, I was sixteen once too, and I had a loud car and I was racing around town, but at the same time, public safety is an issue. Um, I live on a street that some people consider a racetrack, um, had a car go by at well over seventy miles an hour. How they managed to make the two curves on either side of me is absolutely a mystery to me, but um. Sometimes it's terrifying. So yeah, this is still a concern, but yeah, we've got all of those. Uh, from twenty twenty-two that, that were priorities.
Jackie, do you wanna share it? Cause I keep getting kicked off. I put it in the file, um, under four one, there's a, there's a PDF actually that says twenty twenty-three budget retreat.
Thank you, Yakalin. I didn't see uh, you, like, I don't know if we have a topic already on there that has uh, youth services, but Counselor Vasquez. Brought up a great idea um, for this youth commission. Seattle has one, um, I believe they take like. Fifteen youth from the ages of twelve to nineteen and they're appointed by the mayor. We can figure out how that process would work here, but I think that her idea is amazing.
Well, I, I agree with you, Mrs. Roston. I think that, that was a great suggestion and I'd really like to see that developed further. And.
There it is.
Yep.
Yeah. And uh, so just kinda, and then we would have to develop like the, the bylaws or um. Uh, some of, or, well, the code for it and we can figure out how it would, it would fit. or, well, the code for it, and we can figure out how it would, it would fit here in Sunnyside, but I think it's a great opportunity for youth. So I don't know if we have a section already on that list for youth, for youth services.
When she flips back, I don't think there was. I think that um, we did not actually have that.
Could we add it?
We can add it, absolutely. That's the purpose of this conversation.
And this is, like I said, I just brought it because it's the last time that I had something in my records where we actually went through and prioritized specifics. Um, and at that council retreat, if you guys will recall, the, those of you that were there, you actually had little sheets of paper that you went through and put them in order of priority, and so this is the result of that. Um, so we could do that again, like at our budget meeting, our budget retreat this year. Um, but I can, I'm just writing down everything that you guys say, and so I could, we could do something similar where you can prioritize them, so if you have things you want on that list for budget.
I think that was a very productive exercise. Personally, I felt like uh, it, it really forced us to think, because what happened is you guys and staff listened to what we had said, and you heard all of our ideas over the course of, I don't know how long you were listening and taking notes. And then you put that up there, it says, okay, these are the things that you brought up as important to you, now prioritize them. And what did you have, five or seven of them?
Well, all, all of these six, I think it's six categories, right? Yeah, all those six categories had all of those sub items, and so you guys categorized within the sub items, like which things were most important. And then you categorized the, the actual like topic as well. Um, but we could come up with a whole new one based on what, what you guys.
All I remember is it was a job, because we really had to think about it, and yeah.
Okay.
It was a good exercise.
We add it here now, as we're, as we're speaking, can we add it like in red lighting or something as like with the different?
I, I would like to start as to where some of the stuff we still need work on, and we.
Right.
The police have done a lot of great jobs with the flock and whatnot, but I think there's still a lot of stuff that we could, we could definitely.
Well, and the question that we got before us tonight, are these still our priorities? Because we are a new council, are these the priorities that are important to us? Um, if some of them are not the priorities, then okay, we can take that off, but um, are these still major priorities that we want to work on? And because this was two years ago. So what are we thinking today? I, you know, I was on that council, to me, it's still important, but I don't want to speak for this entire body. Because I was there the last time, so.
I mean, it, it is important, the, the, all good valid, you know, items, I, we still need to do a lot of, you know, dog licensing, I don't know how many residents register their dogs, I, they just want to have dogs and let them out loose and not take care of the dogs, so I think we need to really crack down on, on that.
What I, what I'm impressed with is how many of these items that came up in discussion earlier tonight?
Lot of them, a lot of them.
It was, it was significant.
Yeah, even the hu- the homeless, we talked a little bit about that, and uh, you know, affordable housing.
Permit enforcement was one.
Yeah, yeah, that came up, um. You know, just uh, you know, on your street, maybe couldn't we put some rumble, rumble?
Talked about that, but the former Public Works Director was adamantly opposed to that.
Why?
You know, sometimes when I'm working, I'm up on the scenic drive in Yakima, and they've got those things there, and it's like, boy, oh boy, do we need that on Grandview Avenue. But, you know, the first time it takes somebody's car apart, and after that, they'd learn, but um, yeah, for snow removal, it's, it's an issue, I know that, um, because the snowplows, I know where my daughter lives in Iowa, the snowplows have a rubber edge on the blade, and so it's not affected by the speed bumps, but ours don't have that, and so it can cause a fair amount of damage to the street and to perhaps the snow blade. So um, that's going to involve more than just putting the speed bump up, so.
But I still think we should do it.
And of course, I lived in, in the Dominican Republic, and I see, I've seen it also in Mexico, where they just take a piece of pipe, fill it with concrete, bang, there's a speed bump, and that sucker is brutal. Ms. Frausto.
Uh, yeah, so um, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm reading through some of these, and um, most of them make sense very much still. I mean, are we still going after dark-winded tinted windows? Is that a priority? I don't know, I mean, that and like the dog issue, I would say the dog issue, right? Yeah, that and homelessness, I would say homelessness, right, or you know, um, youth services, I would say youth services. Um, so it's something, youth services definitely, um, Counselor Vasquez brought up the amazing idea of the commission, so I definitely want to see youth up there for sure. Um, and then another one, I mean, I don't know if this would go here, but in order to keep any of this going and to begin building out projects on these, we need funding. And I am still adamant that we need a grant writer. Um, I think that we're missing out on a lot of money that we can attain and/or obtain. Um, so in all of that, if we can add another bullet point that says, that's just partic- particular to funding and looking for funding, I think that needs to be prioritized.
I, I think council would agree with that, generally speaking, um, and, and the idea is that a grant writer can probably fund their position. Mr. Beeler.
Didn't you uh, try to fill that position and nobody showed up? We had a hard time.
We had it posted, I think for more than six months, and we got, I think, one applicant or two maybe. Um, but none of the applicants that we had had any relevant um, experience, so.
Position that's going to be hard.
It is, but you know, you have to keep going after it, and, and we did unfund it because we traded it out for the planner. But if we want to fund it again and then just keep going, I mean, we'll find somebody eventually, I would hope.
Yeah, I would think so. I think we need to keep trying. What was, what year was this when we posted this job?
We posted it in twenty twenty-two. Oh, okay, yeah, we need to do it again.
Right, twenty twenty-three?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two is when we posted it, and then we changed it before the end of twenty-two to the planner, which we, is what we posted in twenty-three. I'm pretty sure, I might be a little off on that, so.
So I remember, I remember talking about that, because we talked about it in twenty-one in the budgeting process. And so it was funded for the twenty-two budget, and we, we posted it and did not get the responses, and so we decided as a result of that, that we were going to go for the planning position, because that was also a priority. One of the things that we had seen is things that kind of happened hodgepodge across the city over, over many years, and we were trying to get a little bit more organized. And the person who had been working in the planning position also retired, and so it was just a, you know what, let's let's make this a little bit more streamlined, a little bit cleaner, help the, help the community as far as getting things done, but also, one of the visions that um, several people have, had expressed was getting ready for economic development. As you can see that, you know, one of the things that we talked about was economic improvement, increasing revenue, providing entertainment, and all those types of things. But if we're going to increase industry in town or businesses in town, we actually have to make it plug and play so that the infrastructure is there. And we talked about housing, we're gonna bring housing in, we have to have the infrastructure there, they just be able to plug into the water system, the sewer system, and it's ready to go. And so that's some of the stuff that was part of that as well.
I haven't heard anything on here that anybody thinks is not a priority anymore. Is there anything that you could look at and say, mm, I think we're over that?
I, I think we got rid of dark tinted windows, I think.
That, that is a response to a state law, and I think that was brought up as police uh, security or safety, because when you come up to a car that you've stopped and there's dark tinted windows and you can't see in, and I don't know, Chief, if you want to speak to that.
Well, it, it is a priority for us. I don't know necessarily if it's a priority for council, so I don't know if it goes on the council list, but our officers will continue to enforce it. Because it's a huge safety issue for us when we walk up to a car if their windows are too dark.
I think that's a great example of what we're doing here, is you're right, it does not need to be on there. Because it's kind of everyday work of what the police department should be doing. So if you guys see other things like that.
I think fireworks is very controversial, so that's also something for another department.
Well, and that was brought up by citizens to council, um, loud, loud and clear what's, what these citizens uh, opinion was on that. And so that's why council put that on there, and we were responding to citizens' comments and complaints after a month of fireworks with Fourth of July.
Found the answer for it, huh?
Yeah, I mean, and I, uh, doing the ride along, Counselor Vasquez and I did a ride along, right, with, with Chief um, Layman and um, I mean, he, he, she was explaining to us how hard it is to crack down on the illegal use of fireworks, because he said, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said you literally have to see someone igniting the firework in order to come after them.
Yes, the few seconds they light it, and they run to the yard of forty people, and who do you write the ticket to? That's the problem. So I, I can't imagine how many calls we get in our dispatch center, I mean, on the Fourth of July, it's probably a couple hundred, but when there's four cops working and twenty thousand people lighting fireworks off and stuff, but yeah.
And that was part of that larger conversation, sorry, Trevor, I jumped on you, huh? Um, about, about the permitting process for fireworks, and there was so much in-depth conversation about that, and whether we permit them, and if you permit them to an address, can we write a code enforcement penalty to the address or something like that, so.
You know. If they get a permit, you write it to the responsible person for the fireworks at that property. And you sell those permits for ten dollars apiece, I know there's different cities that do that, and then somebody's responsible. But you'd be allowing fireworks at that point.
Right, so then, yeah, there's really, there's, there's really three options on the table here, it's do you permit, I think that's what we kind of came to the conclusion, you permit a, a, a site in the city. So is it a, a parking lot of a school, is it a parking lot of whatever, a, a city, a city-owned parking lot, something like that, where you just allow people to blast fireworks? Do you allow permits for individuals at their individual properties, or do you just keep it as is? Those are more or less your three options that I think we kind of came to.
Well, if we keep it as is, they're still, they're still igniting them, and they're still going everywhere in July. So I think a permit would be, would be doable.
I, I, I'm not a fan of the public parking lot idea, just because you get so many people there, one thing goes wrong, and you, you get a potential for a lot of people to get hurt.
And it was run for your life. It was.
I feel like this council is so much more receptive to setting fees that make sense that I think that is the avenue we should pursue. I think it's easier to manage within my department for funding, it's easier to manage for code enforcement, it takes some of the work out of it for police, so.
And if they don't have a permit, then you can give them a ticket.
Then they, yeah, and then we'd have a city code that would fine them for uh, fire, unlicensed firework di- discharger, whatever you want to call it. But it's ten dollars, it's not a lot of money, it's not like we're trying to get rich off of it, but it just gives us an avenue to uh, enforce.
But that sure doesn't help the pet owners, because that's the, one of the biggest complaints I had, that drives dogs wild, some of them have problems.
July fourth.
Or New Year's morning.
Yeah, but when it's.
But it's not.
Two weeks before and two weeks after, that's.
Don't understand why they still keep going off. There, some of them went off last.
I had a dog that just tore his cage.
No, and my do- my dogs get really.
Okay, okay, I agree, I feel for the pets, but they're still going to do it.
So what we're, what I'm hearing here then is the fireworks one that we can take off of this list of priorities, but I think we can also ask staff if they could bring before us uh, some sort of an ordinance with a permitting process, and we make that public.
Yeah, it's already done, yeah.
Yeah, you've got it, all we have to do is prove it, right? All right, so, okay, so that can come off our list of priorities. So do we have anything else that we'd like to see, Ms. Horner?
Sorry, I know this isn't for me, but um, I, if we're going to do the same thing, we've talked about yard sale permits very, very, very briefly. I really think that Mr. Martin should bring that back to this council as well. Um, it does give us an avenue. If he does find paper in the town that has somebody's address on it, they're signing a permit saying that they agree not to do something, and then we can issue a citation or a penalty. So there are a lot better ways to be able to manage it. Um, so if you guys are comfortable, I think you should bring that back for.
But we got to have somebody out there on the weekends to find this stuff.
But they usually, if they're not going to pick them up, then they'll still find them on Monday, you know?
Still be able to. And I think the other thing is, is when we first started talking about doing yard sale permits and doing them through the city, we didn't, we talked about having a fee for the yard sales. And we never followed through on that, and I think that that is another avenue that we should address, a permit.
Take work administratively that serves only the individual who's getting the permit, so from my perspective, it should be, it should be a fee.
There should be a fee.
Even if a small one, five, ten dollars.
It doesn't have to be huge if we're going to put a fee on there, but I think that there's an impact, you've got some money invested in this.
No.
And it does give you a different perspective, and I don't want to discourage from people have, people from having yard sales. I know there are people who are avid yard sailors who will go from one to the other and absolutely love doing it. Um, and people who love having yard sales, and so, but if we can keep them within the law or the code and make them function well, I think that's not a bad idea.
Yeah.
Ms. Vasquez, you look like you want to say something.
Yeah, would you, would you guys be willing to do something like a five dollar permit fee, and if you don't want to pick up your box afterwards, we'll pick it up for you for an additional fee.
There's so many great ideas.
Yeah, well, we could pick, if we have to pick up after them, it's better, it better cost at least fifty dollars.
That, yeah, could be a deposit too, like uh.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that would be good.
Just a weigh-in, sorry. Mr. Beeler's question about, so if we don't have anybody on the weekends, how do we enforce whether or not they purchased a permit or not?
I'll take pictures.
Well, we'll have it on file, on, 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 online, if there, if.
There will be those who will have the unpermitted yard sales, you know that's going to happen.
Going to have.
Human nature being what it is, and sometimes they will be caught, and sometimes they won't, unfortunately, but it's a start in the right direction.
O- oftentimes, the person who's doing it right will also tell on the person doing it wrong too.
So that's.
Yeah.
They kind of monitor themselves a little.
And yard sales tend to start on Fridays, so it looks like the code enforcement will be very busy on Fridays.
Yeah, they usually start Fridays.
There was a lot of them last weekend.
Oh, yeah. I tried, I, I was really proud of myself, didn't go to a single one.
Okay, so.
I, I also think we should add maybe like a community engagement priority, where we actually prioritize getting more involved with our community and.
So we've, we've done some of that with our public forums, um, they have been occasionally somewhat well attended, but many times they've been not attended at all, so we may want to rethink how we do it. I agree that the community engagement, the public forum, or however format you want to use, I think it's a great idea, because I think the public needs to be informed about what's going on. If you want to see how uninformed people are, simply read some of the Facebook posts that people put up, but we might want to look at different ways to engage the community.
Correct, and there are so many ways.
There are, and so I, and I appreciate, you know, our new council members coming at us with different ideas that, that we can utilize and make us more effective at what we're doing. Ms. Frausto.
Uh, I second that, uh, Counselor Vasquez, I think that's a, a, no, I mean, it's, it's a definitely a brilliant point to put on the list that we should definitely keep in mind, because every time we're moving through strategy, uh, these lists will definitely bring us back to focus. Um, with our priorities for the year ahead. Um, one thing that I, that just kind of, that occurred to me, um, our good friend and, and great mayor uh, from our neighboring city Granger, um, just did like a state of the city address. Um, and I just thought that was like kind of cool, like.
Well, you know, that's interesting, I've been noticing that too throughout the valley, and it's like, this is not something that I've ever seen Sunnyside do, and I don't, I don't remember seeing other communities in the valley doing it, but.
Yeah.
Why not, you know?
I saw that, that that was a, a really great i- idea. We're going to have our translating services here pretty soon. Um, I think, uh, I mean, maybe even doing, I mean, doing these in a community center versus doing them here at the police station. I thi- many of us have gotten word how many people, I know we packed the house on Monday, uh, but many people are still reluctant to come into a police station. Um, given, you know, previous trauma, they've been formally incarcerated or wrongfully convicted, things like that, right, come up, and so maybe ha- also keeping in mind that doing it outside of the police station would also be beneficial to many of our community members. Um, but planning to do something quarterly, and then something that we're like, our coun- the council members can be there just for the sake of just visibility and the more visibility that we have, the more of the relationship building that happens, and with relationship buildings comes trust, so. Um, I think it would be a great opportunity to, to seek as one of the points for community engagement.
I, I don't disagree with you. Good, thank you for that.
I, I have a question, so, on, in regards of community engagement, has Sunnyside ever done any like open town meetings, kind of like, I, you see in the movies, right, they have these, they have the city hall or the city hall meetings. And community comes and asks questions or brings up, um.
So yes, we have, um, so one of the things about uh, television shows and, and movies is that they're incredibly inaccurate. Um, so they have to be structured somewhat, because otherwise you'll be going on for eight hours, and I have personally witnessed people when they didn't have a time limit, and they started talking about one thing, and they wandered to several different things, and they wouldn't, would go on for fifteen or twenty minutes. And finally reached the point that they originally wanted to talk about, and so it does need some sort of structure in order to be productive. And we really want these type of town hall meetings or public forums to be productive. If we want to hear from the community, then we need to hear the points that are important to them, and we need to be able to respond. And so if people are allowed to go on for twenty minutes at a time, that's going to limit the number of people who can speak, who can ask us questions, and so we don't want to take that opportunity away from people, so that's where I would say a, a time limit is very important, and ask questions, and and it's kind of like the public comment period, right? Um, so to take, for example, Ms. Frausto's idea of the state. Um, so to take, for example, Ms. Fausto's idea of the state of the city. Alright, let's say we give a report on the city. This is what we have done. This is what is happening in the city of Sunnyside. Does anybody wish to ask something specific, or make some comments, or share some ideas, and give them time to do that? Uh, somehow, but it has to be structured, and, and I know we've got people on staff who are capable of doing that, making it turn out really good. And I think, yeah. You know, we did, what, two or three public forums last year? And I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, and then you can standardize, we can standardize them too, like, do we want them ha- happening quarterly? Do we wanna happening bi- biannually? And so it's just something to kind of standardize, so we don't have to, I mean, we probably won't have the capacity to do this every month. But at least if we plan on doing these quarterly or biannually, I think what's also gonna help around this community engagement is, as we're seeking out a new uh, city manager. Um, it's also gonna help along the way with giving updates, and I think m- mister B- or Council Biller had brought up the idea of like doing a community forum, once we get to the finalists. Yeah, meet and greet kind of things, yeah.
And, and I've had more people asking me about that, and I think we need to commit to that, actually.
Yeah.
Cuz I think people are, are interested in doing that. I've had several people, all walks of life, asking about how are we, how can we get involved in the process? And honestly, hiring the city manager is the council's job, so it doesn't really involve a lot of the community members. However, we want the community members to meet and have an idea what the city manager's like, and we do want their feedback.
Right.
And so a meet and greet time for either candidates, I would say for candidates, we get a, we get a table of six of them. And we have a public meet and greet. Gives us a chance to see how they interact with the public, but the public is a feeling for them as well. So I, I think we need to commit to that. I think that, and that's just my personal opinion. If I get downvoted on that one, I'm absolutely fine. But I really think it is, it's, it's a big deal to me that the public get to meet them.
No, I think that's great.
I think that'll probably be part of the proposal that comes from the uh
Recruiters.
Recruiters, yeah, so they'll probably have a portion that's a community meet and greet, they'll probably have a portion that's a department head uh interview or something to that effect where the department heads can give you, uh, as a council, some feedback on what their perception was. And then at the community meet and greet, they might be able to uh vote for their favorite one, or write down some comments for you uh a- as a, a group to consider. I think that's probably a hundred percent gonna happen, I, I would think, so.
Excellent. Alright, council, I, I hate to push us along, cuz I think we're having really good conversation tonight. We have thirty minutes more that we can meet. And we have another agenda item, it's item C, upcoming proclamations. And we wanna talk about this tonight, because if we decide in April, we're going to do a number of proclamations, and then Ms. Renteria, do we have to, want to force her to have five proclamations ready to go if we decide? Or throw a couple of them out if we don't decide on some of them. So we're gonna try to talk about the ones for April tonight. And you all received a, a sheet of paper with proclamations on there. It is two-sided. And Madam City Clerk, are you okay if we talk about April's tonight and then worry about May, prior to May?
Yes, and again, the list that you have is just a list that I've compiled from other cities. Obviously, there's so many more proclamations that we can do, but I've just narrowed it down to the ones I've just quickly saw. And then a few that we've done here in the city already. Um, you can decide and, or we can also just let the community submit their requests online. But for April, that is the, those are the ones that I've listed. You don't have to do them all. It's up to you.
Okay, so what we don't have here, and um, we really haven't had the opportunity to research any of these, but you can tell by the title what they are. Um, Autism and Other Neurodivergence Acceptance and Appreciation Month. Um, that is the entire month of April. Do, and I'm just gonna go through these one by one and just ask for feedback on each of these. And if we want to do them, then let's, you know, do that by, by consensus. Or, yeah, no objection, kind of thing.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, does this, um, these aren't gonna include, cuz I know the community will still send things over to Yacaline. Um, by doing this, it doesn't mean that we're, um.
Limited.
We're limiting, right, the ones that are still about to come in.
This is council's prerogative. We, we were look, these are the ones that she's gonna have ready for Monday night. And if there's more that community members submit and council approves them, then they can be read at the reg- second regular meeting in April. So, yeah, no, it's not limiting it, anything. So how is council feeling about the first one? Autism and Other Neurodivergence Acceptance and Appreciation Month?
And that's a good one.
Like that one.
Okay. Earth Month.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Yes.
That's a huge one.
Yeah.
Okay. National Volunteer Week.
Yep, we depend on our volunteers, absolutely.
Right, and National Infertility Awareness Week.
National Infertility?
Heard of that one, but I don't know.
I think we could pass.
Yeah. Okay.
Now we're gonna hear from.
Can I, can I hear why? I'm, I'm kind of in favor of this one, but can I hear why you, you wanna pass on this one?
Well, the reason why is because I feel like if we vote for that, we're pretty much gonna have to vote in favor for everything. And.
You mean everything related to that female health or health?
No, not just female health, just.
Just.
I think we should, in my opinion, I think we should kind of narrow it down to a few. Um, and that's my opinion.
Any, anybody else on that?
I will, I will say that those who struggle to get pregnant, it's a big deal to them.
It is.
But what percent of the popul-
Of our city.
I am unaware of that. I don't know. Again, I haven't had any more time to research this any, than any of you, so.
And this is close to me as well. My, my mom had issues, my sis, you know, my family, so I'm not against it. I'm so for it. I just I, the point, I guess I'm trying to get across is, I don't think a proclamation from the city of Sunnyside is necessary for every topic.
Okay.
Well, I agree with that point. Um, but I think, but I, I, I agree with your, your premise about not maybe having that one as a proclamation unless we get somebody from.
I mean, who are we supporting doing the proclamation of Earth Month?
Part, I think Earth, or I think Earth Month is important because it's us taking care of the earth, and you know, like littering, making sure that it's clean, making sure that our community looks nice, and that's, that's why I, I like that one.
Maybe we need to come up with like, I mean, look at May, there's a lot of them.
There's a lot.
Have a limit on how many.
Yeah, uh, you know, and I, I, I agree with that. I, I really just wanna make sure, like, I think for, like, look, when we signed the proclamation for Sasa Chavez Day, uh, we had a crowd of, of, of UFW, right? So it was really meaningful to them to be here, right? I think sexual assault awareness, I mean, an issue that so many people go through regardless of gender identity. Um, but who could we like partner up that's doing work around this, you know, in the community? I'm not saying it doesn't exist, but like to your point, Council Biller, I think that's really good, like, um, connecting it to something within the community. I know for, for Earth Month, we've been talking about revitalizing our city, cleaning up our city, and then we, we, we live in the community where agriculture is a big, big thing. So I think that would definitely be a to par, um, with that. Autism and Other Neurodivergence, I mean, we have so many people living with neurodivergency. Um, but I, I, I get where the limitation is, because I really want it to be meaningful and not that we're um, neglecting, right, um, specific topics. Um, and then also, um, people are still going, community members might still be um, introducing some to Yacaline or Mesranteria, and uh, so we're also gonna have to leave some, some space for those that are coming in, which are gonna be meaningful, connecting to the community, but.
And, and I, yeah, and I'd like to agree with Vicky, kind of like sexual assault awareness, we can partner probably with the Lighthouse. And then even the Earth Month, I know that Nuestra Casa came around and they helped c- clean up and pick up litter. So we could probably even partner up with some organizations that have been helping up and stepping up in Sunnyside.
Um, as far as like with the Sexual Assault Awareness Week or Month, um, the uh, um, like Letitia, um, Garcia, who's the, the director over at Light, Lighthouse, um, she probably has a proclamation to p- present to the council for the mayor's signature. Um, at least when I was the director over there, we, I made sure that we had a, to the, to the city of the proclamation that, that talks about the statistics and so on and so forth. So, yeah, that one, there's, you know, and they're gonna be doing their uh Walk a Mile in Her Shoes event coming up in, in April. Yeah, so, but I, I really, that one I think is a, is a gimme. As far as the National Infertility Week, I, I think we can hold on that.
Yeah.
The other ones I like.
You know, the thing with proclamations is like, I, I, I would hate for it to become a tedious list versus something that's directly connected to our community members. So we, uh, these lists are quite expensive, but and, 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 but I really wanna hit at the core of what's meaningful to, to to community members.
Right, when we get to May, I think Mr. Uh, uh, Pas- Pasqua? Do you remember Mr. Pasqua?
I remember a Mr. Pasqua, but I'm not sure I'm remembering the same one you're saying.
I think you are remembering the same one. He always brings us in, the one about the Pacific. Um, uh, American, Asian American and Pacific Islander, here it is. Yes, Mr. Pasqua.
His what? Miss Pasqua, was it the teacher?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah, Ray Pasqua. Yeah, he's great, but, um, yeah. I just would hate for this to become transactional.
Well, and I, I just want it to be like, like you said, meaningful.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we've got.
We're good for April.
And if we, if we continue that trend with four of them, we will read forty-eight proclamations each year. Having read them, and Ms. Hart, you can probably speak to this too, they are not always easy to read. I want you to know that I will stumble over Autism and Other Neurodivergence Aware Acceptance and Appreciation Month as I try to read that proclamation. Because that is a lot for my tongue to twist around multiple times. However, I will do it. So, but that's, I'm, and I'm not complaining about it. I'm just saying, you know, keep in mind that that will be four of them that need to be read into the record at the beginning of each, of, each of next meeting, and so, but yeah, we will definitely do that. Plus, whatever, anybody else?
You need two and two, if it's more?
Typically, it's whoever's in charge of the meeting. We'll read that into the record. Ms. Faustas?
I have a question. So in regards of us agreeing, we're not agreeing right now, we, um, this will still be up for a vote, correct?
I'm taking direction from you guys today. This is, this is it, so, yeah, so.
So right now, we're voting right now.
By, by your conversation is, is what I'm taking my information from. So right now, um, we've got the first four for April that it sounds like council wants to have read. National Infertility Awareness Week, not, is what I'm reading from council right now.
And, well, I just wanna be clear, it's not that I'm against it, I'm so for it. It's just I don't want to say yes to everything.
May I, may I suggest that we maybe just pick one or not pick and just allow the public to submit their requests? Because a lot of these are written by the public. Like, ca- um, Council Fausto said, so I, maybe pick one, two? Um, and again, these would be brought back to you at the study session to discuss and then voted on and then read at council.
Okay.
I think that's a, a really great idea. Maybe we can limit it to one or two that we can vote on and come to a consensus. Um, for and, um, oh, it's gosh, I just lost my train of thought, but and then, mm.
And then like in May, do the obvious ones, that would be like Cinco de Mayo, which is, applies to Sunnyside. Um, Memorial Day, and then um, there are some firefighter EMS and Police Week, so there are gonna be a lot of them in May.
Yeah, and then there, a lot of them are gonna be brought forth too.
Well, and, well, like I said, the, the things from the community, a lot of them will be self-generated by the community as, as a similar to the Cinco, uh, Caesar Chavez one.
Okay, I remember what I was gonna say. Sorry, I had lost my train of thought. Um, could, could we do, Yacaline, would, like, uh, since you're doing marketing now, would we be able to, to market this to the community and say, hey, we're now taking proclamations in, so then?
Yes, I'm, yeah. I have the page started. I just, um, finalized the form today. I just was testing it out before. So the page is there, it just says, form coming soon, so probably tomorrow it'll go live, and then I'll post it so that people can submit. Um, that only gives us two, three days, two and a half days to put it on the agenda. Um, but that doesn't mean we can't amend the agenda if something comes in. Uh, I'll put on the website that we would like these requests to come in thirty days before, so that it wa- allows us or, you know, council to review them and then bring it up for approval. But for now, since it's so close to the next meeting.
We could potentially, and this is up to us again, um, for the first month only, not have public input on this month's proclamations, but in May. Um, that way that we've got the thirty days or at least a period of lead time so that we can, we can look at it. Um, because from today to Monday is a very short period of time. And that puts a lot of weight on the public too, to try to come up with something. Oh, do I want something, you know? But then they'll have, they'll have all the month of April to research what they wanna put in May. Ms. Faustas?
Could we also, as we're getting these requests from the public, could we also possibly like bring it up to a vote within all of us?
Yes.
That's, that's.
We will see them at the study session. So, yeah, at the study session is when we decide which proclamations we're gonna do.
Okay.
Mr. Beeler?
Um, like next month, we have Memorial Day, which is on the twenty-seventh. Can we do that on this, the third meeting of the month? As long as it's before the target date or?
The, the regular meeting just before Memorial Day, we absolutely can, yes.
Either way, you would, even some of these out, so you're not reading all four of them all in one meeting. I understand if it's, you know, of the month, that should be read.
Yeah.
At the first meeting.
We would start splitting these up so you see them ahead of time, so that way you know that, okay, we're gonna put this one on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Again, this is, this is council's direction. I am more than happy to do however council wants it, so. For sure. Alright, so we're looking at four for Monday, and we will talk about it during the study session and come to a final conclusion at that point, and then, um, go from there.
So council's direction is for me to draft four proclamations for you to review on Monday.
At five o'clock.
Five, five thirty.
Five thirty.
If you'd like to do it at five, we can.
I think what Jackie's not saying is that's gonna be a lot of work for her to do in the next week.
That's, that is.
It is a lot of work, but a lot of these are already drafted. That's why I said I've pulled these from other cities. They are drafted, so I would just pull, um, and obviously, um, pull new statistics if a lot of this is up, but it is a lot of work. So if you could narrow it down, that would be better. But I will do whatever you.
That, I, I, yeah, I personally would prefer to have it narrowed down tonight, but.
Me too.
You know.
Could we narrow it down, please?
Up two?
Yeah, the top two.
Okay, pick the top two.
National Volunteer Week.
Are you talking?
Okay. So for the month of April for Monday night, so we're not gonna go into May yet. Alright, so we're gonna pick the top two of the four that we have for this coming Monday night. Alright, so, and we do it by a show of hands here, because I was a high school teacher and that's how we work. Those of you who are in favor of the Autism and Other Neurodivergence Acceptance and Appreciation Month as one of the top two, please indicate by raising your hand. I've got two. Alright, those who would like Earth Month to be one of the top two, please indicate by raising your hand. I see one. Sexual Assault Awareness Month, those who want that as their top two. Now, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Alright, National Volunteer Week as one of the top two. Alright, I've got six there. And Nash, okay, we didn't, we said not National Infertility Awareness Week, so. Alright, what I'm looking at right here is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, got seven votes, National Volunteer Week, got six. Those will be our top two. Any objection to that? And alright, what do you call that, a straw poll? Very informal way of doing it, since we don't pass ordinances or resolutions during a study session. Alright.
Thank you.
That saves you a little time and energy.
It does, thank you.
Very good. Alright, continuing on, fifteen minutes, upcoming council meetings. April eighth, five thirty, it doesn't say on your agenda, but five thirty, special meeting or study session. And that's where we will have our agenda items up before us to talk about, and.
Chief, can I just make a quick comment before I forget? I think I told him to come at six thirty, so if he needs to present at the five thirty study session, you might wanna reach out to him.
Yeah, well, I'll reach out to him tomorrow. Council members who, who aren't aware what that exchange was about, uh, one of our lone applicants was here, um, understood he needed to be here this evening as opposed to next week, and so, um, make sure that he, we wanna make sure he's there at the right time so that he can present to us the way the other applicants did last week. And so um make sure that he, we want to make sure he's there at the right time so that he can present to us the way the other applicants did last week. By the way, I like that approach. I really like hearing from them and being able to ask them questions. I think that, that really adds to it. From my perspective, I don't know how it makes them feel. But I think it was very beneficial for us as council.
Tell them to prepare for it, yeah.
Okay. Okay, alright, so then April eighth at six thirty will be our, our regular meeting. So keeping in mind that our study, study session lasts for no more than one hour. Uh April twenty-two, again, the special meeting will be the study session at five thirty. And you see the agenda items that are listed up there on the screen. April twenty-two, our regular meeting after that study session starts at six thirty. Again, item met for the agenda that need to be added, please make sure they come into the clerk before or no later than Wednesday. Okay, and I know some of you have been doing that, you've been observing that very well. Thank you for that. That makes all of our lives much easier. Alright, there being no further items to come before council, and if there's no objection. We are adjourned, seven forty-seven PM. Thank you, everybody. I do believe this was a good meeting. Lorenzo, you have a question?